Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to this special call meeting, Dare County Board of Commissioners, Tuesday, April the 9th, 2024. We have the honor of having with us this morning Reverend Thomas Wilson, who will lead us in an invocation. Reverend, thank you for being here this morning.
Thank you. It is an honor to be here. Can we just take a moment of stillness and silence? And be still and come together in this time of division. Division in this world, in this county. Help us to work together for the common good of those who live and those who work in this community, this state, this nation, and this world, and this creation, which we are privileged to be in, in this part of heaven. This we ask and pray. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Wilson. May we stand for the pledge.
Pledge of limitations to the law act and the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, wherever it may be, just for all.
County Manager.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Item one on the agenda is your opening remarks.
Thank you, County Manager. Before we get started, can we get any more chairs that we could help these folks over to the right? I hate to see them. We're going to be a while, folks, and I don't want y'all to have to stand here for the duration of this meeting. We have plenty of time today. We're going to take all the time that's necessary to hear as much public comment as is here and who's willing to speak, and I want y'all to be able to be comfortable while we do so. Once again, I'd like to welcome everyone this morning to this special call board meeting of the Dare County Board of Commissioners concerning essential and workforce housing. We also want to welcome those that are viewing live this morning. We welcome you folks as well. At the encouragement of my fellow commissioners and board members, I called a special board meeting to address how we got started with housing, how did we get where we are today, and we're going to discuss where do we go from here. I'd like to set the stage for today's meeting. After my comments, we will open the meeting up for public comment, and we will welcome your public comment. We have about, I want to say about 10 emails that we have received as a board, and we will make those emails that we have received part of this public comment period after we have that today. Once we have public comment, I've asked the county manager to, as I stated a few moments ago, talk about where and how we got started addressing housing, how did we get where we are today, and where do we go from here? If you will indulge me for a few moments, we have approximately 37,000 full-time residents in Dare County with about 300-plus restaurants and fast food operations serving the community from Buxton to Duck with almost 100 miles of beach coastline. There are thousands of property management rentals, as well as Airbnbs throughout the county, and multiple retail and business operations throughout our county. All of these have need for workers. Each and every one of us are blessed to live in such a sought-out location on the East Coast with our pristine beaches and multitude of historic things to see and do right here in Dare County. Over the past 10 years plus, this board has been involved in managing the county with doing what we felt was in the best interest of our citizens. This board is a proactive board addressing all of the needs of our citizens. It was this board that has provided over $250 million to nourish our beaches, providing two cents of our six cents occupancy tax to do so, along with the municipalities' funding. This is our economic engine. It was this board that tore down the old schools here in Manio to make way for the new COA campus for our Dare County students. That project was an $18 million project. It's a gateway to Manio. It's a beautiful facility. It was this board that created the Dare Guarantee Scholarship Fund for every student graduating in Dare County. To date, some 274 students have taken advantage of this to the tune of about $697,000. It was this board that will be building an early college building on the COA campus site in 2025. We were fortunate enough to build this facility with $25 million of the state education lottery fund. It was this board that is building a new youth center in Manio for the children in Manio. The old Masonic Lodge has been tore down. You're seeing that. We're getting ready to build that for our youth in Manio to the tune of $8 million. It was this board who provided the land for the town of Manio to build a commons area with parking in Manio at no cost to them for that land. It was this board who provided the old courthouse building for the arts council and arts to house their arts at no cost to the arts council, free rent. It was this board who is now building a new EMS facilities throughout the county at the tune of about $42 million. We just did the ribbon cutting in Southern Shores recently. You've seen the facility in KDH. We hope to do that ribbon cutting very soon. Very, very good facilities, but we're doing this all over the county. It was this board who built the 911 facility to serve three counties, Terrell, Hyde, and Dare, to the tune of some $14 million. It was this board who built the new SPCA facility on Roanoke Island at a cost of about $8 million. It was this board who also provided a dog park on Roanoke Island for our citizens. It was this board who provided funds to make repairs to the ball fields in Kitty Hawk recently to the tune of about $100,000. It was this board who provided funds to make repairs to the soccer fields in KDH to the tune of about $1.2 million. It was this board that in the past four years increased county employee salaries, provided COLAS merit pay, and contributed their 401K in excess of $8 million. It was this board that provided funding for a recovery court. It was this board that provided the saving lives task force that Vice Chairman Oberman formed a number of years ago. It was this board that helped fund new facilities in Dare County. It was this board that provided the funds to renovate the Health Department and Social Services. It was this board that fought for lower insurance rates. It was this bridge who lobbied for a new Alligator River Bridge. It was this board that supported the Oregon Inlet Task Force that lobbied the state for a private funded partnership to the tune of $15 million to build a dredge so our watermen could go to work every single day. It was this board who provides the funding at the highest level for our schools in the state of North Carolina. It was this board that recently went to DC to lobby to mitigate the environmental issues in Buxton. Folks, I could go on and on with a number of other things that this board has done for its citizens, but I think you get my point. You might ask, Mr. Chairman, what does all of this have to do with providing essential workforce housing in Dare County? Well, I can tell you, it has everything to do with providing housing. It is the board's mission to always look for ways to improve the lives of those who work and live here. Where there has been a need, this board has certainly stepped up to the plate. And yes, we were trying to help another issue in trying to resolve the housing issues in Dare County. Thank you for allowing me that time. I will now turn it back over to our county manager.
Item two on the agenda is public comment. At this time, we allow public comment. Please limit your comment to five minutes. Up on the podium, when you come, please state your name and where you're from. There's a green light that will come on when your time begins. There's a yellow light that will come on when there's about a minute left, and when the red light comes on, you need to conclude your remarks. We've got a lot of people signed up this morning, and so when you speak, when the red light comes on, we're going to cut you off. We're not trying to be rude, but we're trying to be fair to the people that are here as well. So please, when the light comes on, conclude your remarks, and we don't have to stop anybody, and we'll start the public comment now. First on the list, I have Abby Siler.
Yes, ma'am. What's your name?
My name is Abby Siler. Yeah, and I am living in Killdable Hills. When I practice this, it's about 30 seconds over, so I'm sorry. If you'll just let me get it, I'll do it. Good morning. I want to begin this comment with the utmost respect to all of you who sit on this board and face the decisions of our community. As civil servants, it is a hard task to bear, and I hope you know that I see and understand that the jobs you all hold require a significant amount of time, energy, and juggling. My name is Abby, but many in the room may remember me better as little Abby Sawyer. I grew up here in the 90s and the early 2000s as a young girl, and I remember how this community invested in me. As a local Girl Scout, I remember pedaling my bike door-to-door selling cookies, and in 1994, Mr. Ron Spear, who was one of my best customers at eight years old, put me in the local newspaper for the very first time. That article hangs in my shop in Naggs Head. It has hung in every office as well as my other location before I arrived here with that business. He saw in me, a young person, the entrepreneurial dream and the desire to be connected to my community. As I got older, I was welcomed with open arms into crowds much older than me as a volunteer for several local nonprofit organizations in Dare County. Many of those leaders are your generation's peers and some of the greatest business pioneers on the Outer Banks. In 2001, those same leaders of your generation, some living and some passed on, saw again that community-focused desire in me as a teenager and nominated me for the North Carolina Governor's Award for Volunteerism representing Dare County. At that time, I was the youngest recipient of the award in the state. It's often said that the "boomer" generation is not very supportive of the "millennial" generation, but in Dare County, I disagree. I did not have that experience growing up or as an adult. In my college years, several peers in your generation opened their homes to me to live while I interned at Pathways International, helping international students get to and from Elizabeth City for their visas and managing the in-house computer lab by day. At night, I waited tables to save for college, which supplemented my scholarships, and I did this every summer for four years. At that time, housing was just beginning to be a struggle, but not quite as bad as it is today. When my husband and I lived here 10 years ago in our early to mid-20s, we rented. After several years here where I worked in marketing and served as the co-chair of the initial Outer Banks Bicycle Pedestrian Safety Coalition alongside past Commissioner Max Stutton, we decided to move away to be closer to family in another state. We did that for a decade, but the Outer Banks has always been my home, and it's where I want to be for the rest of my life. I opened my small business during that decade away, but in 2022, I decided it was time to move it back to the beach. We made the choice to drop the restaurant side of my business due to the housing crisis and the realization that many of the longest-standing establishments on this beach were struggling to keep year-round help due to there being nowhere to live for most of the middle class and nearly all of the folks my age. We also downsized in order to staff our own business while this all shook out. We are headed into our third season on the beach, and I am in my seventh year of business, and it's not been easy, but I am home. In addition to business decisions, we faced a decision on whether to rent or to buy a house. We decided to rent due to the tumultuous housing prices here, and we had hoped by now that we would be able to buy. I consider myself lucky that I have a landlord who is fair, kind, and genuinely interested in helping locals. Landlords like mine are hard to find these days, and I am eternally grateful to her. She is another local person from an older generation who continues to invest in my well-being and dreams as a young adult, though I do struggle to call myself young because my grays are coming in and I'm about to turn 40. All jokes aside, I can't tell you how many of my childhood friends are posting in the housing groups every six to nine months looking for a place to live because the owner decided to sell or to turn that place into a short-term rental. Folks that lived here their entire life and never moved away, and some who grew up here but want to come back, just like me. Then we have the generation younger than us who can't afford to rent at all, much less dream of buying, so they live with their families in multi-generational households. And then there's the housing for our international community, which is a whole nother set of challenges that directly impacts our local business, especially in the summer. My generation and the generations to come are looking to all of you to consider what our future will look like here on the beach. Will we ever be able to own a home? Will the rent continue to climb so high that it is impossible for students to return here? Will we be able to grow our businesses and create jobs? Will future generations be able to start new creative concepts to keep the charm of the Outer Banks alive? The adults of my childhood in Dare County instilled in me the belief that community matters, to show up, to participate, to help and to serve. They instilled in me the entrepreneurial dream of being a small business owner, but even further, that as a business owner, you have to get involved and give back. The fabric of our community is stitched together by people who love this place and have invested their lives in making it unique on every level, and our small businesses last. My hope is that my small business will see the 50 to 60-plus years, 50 to 60-plus years that many small businesses see today. Those are milestones that I look forward to. Housing is dire, and I do not oppose affordable, long-term housing solutions. However, the option before us right now seems to be just another opportunity for another developer to create more short-term rentals, which only...
She's got part of my time.
Thank you. Housing is dire, and I do not oppose affordable, long-term solutions. However, the option before us right now seems to be just another opportunity for another developer to create more short-term rentals, which only digs the hole deeper for people my age to get out of. Without a healthy middle class with a reasonable housing situation, our longstanding and new restaurants and shops will not survive, and the things that make the Outer Banks special and unique will begin to erode. We will just be another tourist trap with hollow buildings and crappy service, with empty seasonal megaplexes and local folks forced to sleep in their cars at the beach access. We will begin to attract the types of visitors that do not respect the beauty of this precious place that we all love because our longtime visitors will simply say it's not the same as it used to be, and sadly, many already do. I always wanted to grow up to be like the men and women who invested in me as a young girl and a young woman here in Dare County, and I still do. I'm asking you today, as the peers, to so many of my mentors, please make it easier for me and others like me to live here and grow our businesses so that we can invest in the next generations in the same way as your generation invested in me. I wouldn't be the woman I am today without those people in this community who saw me for who I was at that young age and provided me the opportunities to contribute and participate. That is the community I moved back to, and I know we still have it because look around this room. Please invest in our county's future generations instead of these not-quite-right scenarios that are just slowing us all down from finding a real solution to the issue of long-term housing on this beach. Thank you for your time.
Elizabeth Newman from Killdable Hills and Kitty Hawk. I split my time there. My concern with this process is that the Board of Commissioners are not being good stewards of North Carolina taxpayers' money, whether it be Dare County or another part of North Carolina. I have been involved in the day-to-day ownership and property management of Tax Credit, Workforce Section 8, and year-round housing for over 25 years in North Carolina and Virginia. We have never seen a pre-development contract, much less one that is stacked against the citizens and promoted as an honest and professional contract. Taking money that could be used for affordable housing to pay private individual bills for their personal LLC tax planning and loan forgiveness is suspect at best. I hope today we will find out the answers as to why this group was chosen to represent the Board of Commissioners. From the Virginian Pilot, there is a bill from the Coastal Affordable Housing on behalf of Ward and Smith. And just one of the entries I'm going to read so other people can have my time if needed. Analysis of Tax and Legal Authority Regarding Follow-Up Questions from the External Counsel for Coastal Affordable Housing Forgivable Loan and Treatment as Bonafide Debt, Including Whether Forgiveness of Interest Will Trigger an Income Inclusion. Analysis of the U.S. Tax and Legal Authority Regarding Whether Forgiveness of Interest on a Loan Triggers a Taxable Income Inclusion for a Cash Basis or Accrual Basis Taxpayer. Courts Will Consider in Determining Whether an Advancement of Funds Is Bonafide. Debt and Factors to Consider in Determining a Reasonable Rate of Interest to Avoid a Blow Market Rate Loan. This is a bill that I believe Dare County paid. It was presented by the Virginian Pilot, and I look forward to hearing answers on that.
Cindy Holder.
My name is Cindy Holder, and I thank you for allowing us to make general public comments on this issue with you again, once again. I'm speaking on behalf of the Mans Harbor Civic Association today. Our President, Robin Mann, is currently out of town, so I'm here today with Timmy Midget, our Vice President, and Linda Harris, who is a strong supporter of the Civic Association. We are all three natives of Dare County, and we have a lifetime of experience watching this issue become more and more of a problem for our workforce. Indeed, our families and grandfathers have dealt with this issue ever since the Wright Memorial Bridge was built in the mid-1930s and opened the county to development, and we are indeed appreciative of all the things that this board does for us. Don't think we're not appreciative of it. But the simple fact is with the matter at hand today is that there is no one single solution or entity that is going to fix or solve this affordable housing problem for our county. The time for those easy possible solutions has come and gone many moons ago when there were still large tracts of land left in Dare County to develop, buildable land. And notice that I don't call this a crisis. I call it an issue because this is not only happening in Dare County, it's happening all over our country. I see similar situations in and near Jackson Hole, Wyoming, where I lived for over 17 years. So I encourage you, as part of your process, to look at other examples in our country to work these problems out for us. The past has finally caught up with us in Dare County, and the problem of lack of vision and greed is that a few of the wealthy keep on getting wealthier and the less... and greed is that a few of the wealthy keep on getting wealthier, and the less fortunate are unable to buy a home of their dreams like the first lady that spoke this morning. So if we're really serious about finding a solution to this problem, we need to look at multiple options in general that might help create more affordable housing. Multiple options that may be the only viable option as large parcels of land are extremely limited at this point in Dare County. So here's a list of things that we came up with that have worked in the past, either for our family's experience in business in this county, or that we have observed in other areas of the country where we have lived during our time away from Dare. And granted, none of these are easy or inexpensive. And these suggestions come with their own set of problems, because the real problem here, simple fact, is there is no longer any large parcel of buildable land in Dare County. So here's some of our suggestions. Dare County already has an extensive fleet of public transportation vans on hand. Use a percentage of those vans to bus employees from outlying counties. Number two, encourage business to provide employees that commute long distances, set up a distance of thirty-five miles or whatever, a stipend for gasoline expenses. Back in the nineteen-sixty-seventies, my parents did that very thing. They hired women from Terrell County to come clean motel rooms, and they gave them, for decades, they gave them a stipend for their gasoline. Encourage businesses to house, to provide housing for their workers. And there are numerous examples of this already in Dare County. Morrison Grove, Kitty Hawk Kites, a lot of the restaurants, they're, they own private rentals so that their key work staff can rent a home or live here year-round. Work with nonprofit organizations and other entities like Dare Education Foundation to create housing solutions whose contractual agreements clearly define the purpose and the intent of providing houses, anywhere from four to upwards of ten years to professional individuals who are finding it hard to live and work in Dare County. Buy some of those homes from the unfortunate taxpayers who are losing their homes to the ravages of the sea, and would probably be very amicable to sell a price for, to sell a price instead of paying for more taxes on homes that are falling into the ocean. Buy some land over in Terrell County or Currituck County, or work with county officials to create a high-density development in those areas. It's obvious that the public outcry since last May and April do not want, in our already overdeveloped communities in Dares, high-density housing. Ah, but the criteria of the loans don't allow, you say. Well, here's the deal. We understand that there are all kinds of rumors and innuendos circulating about, out there that create unrest, and that is because we need transparency in our government. We look forward to hearing your explanations of what has transpired over the past years. Admittedly, we found it a little unusual that you were taking public comment first before you told us what you wanted to tell us, but in the name of transparency, we felt that we needed to speak our minds for you today to let you know what we're thinking out here. If the involvement in reaping the benefits of a source of money, let's say thirty-five million dollars, comes from legislation that appears to be written and tailored to a very limited audience, is causing you angst, then walk away from it. Send it back. Coupled with the fact, coupled with the fact that those limiting criteria on that funding comes as a dangled carrot, does it not appear that it's not a good fit for Dare County? We would encourage you to return that money and remove yourself from that situation and go back to square one. Try in earnest this time to solve a problem that has been kicked around in this county for over forty years. And in concert with the voices and the people of the county that you serve, we encourage you and your task force to do something about it this time. In closing, I commend you for all the things you've done for us in this county. We appreciate it, and I commend you for creating a Housing Workforce Task Group to gather information from our communities and report back to you. Now I would ask you to do one more thing with that task group. Maybe you could ask each and every one of those members to go out in this community and speak to at least ten or fifteen people in our community from all walks of life, all professions, and report their findings back to you. Maybe they'll have some good ideas. We do appreciate everything you do for us, and we look forward to seeing you in Mans Harbor once again.
Good morning. My name is Michelle Hall. I'm from Kill Devil Hills. I was born here, I've lived here my whole life. And I would first like to thank the Board of Commissioners for holding this special meeting, and to also thank everyone in attendance today for showing up for our community. When I saw months ago that thirty-five million dollars in state funds had been allocated for affordable housing, I was concerned. Not concerned with affordable housing conceptually, as I know a good number of folks on this beach working multiple jobs just to break even that could really benefit from better access to housing. I was concerned, however, with how this legislation was, for one, completely taking the power away from the six Dare municipalities to regulate any potential housing developments, and two, allocating all state money for these housing solutions to Coastal Affordable Housing LLC, who have been unsuccessful in their attempts to develop any affordable housing units so far. I became more concerned when I learned that a primary owner of Coastal Affordable Housing LLC, Jordan Hennessy, was involved in the writing of the law that stripped our town's power to regulate housing projects, effectively giving most, if not all, of that decision-making power to the housing partner. This feels like an obvious conflict of interest when the same person is the principal owner of the housing partner in question. Now I know the Dare County Board of Commissioners passed a resolution in January stating that they would not use House Bill 259 to undermine any local government zoning authority in regards to working house, workforce housing solutions, and while I genuinely appreciate that word, I don't believe it's enough. We cannot, as a county, continue working with a housing partner that tried to go over the heads of all town officials through legislation. A housing partner, mind you, that has already invoiced this county more than three hundred thousand dollars and could collect a sum of up to five million dollars from the county in pre-development work alone. For these reasons, I'm encouraging the Board of Commissioners to cut ties with Coastal Affordable Housing LLC and send those allocated funds back to the state before we waste more taxpayer money on developments that will likely never come to fruition. And only when you send this money back to the state and cut ties with Coastal Affordable Housing LLC will citizens' trust in our county officials be restored. Thank you. I'll give you my time.
Welcome, Ms. Emery.
Hi. Thank you. I'm Janine Emery. I'm from Manio. Good morning. And unfortunately, in your introduction to all of your accomplishments, you were unable to provide housing to support the growing infrastructure that you supported and helped develop. It seems that not in my backyard is prevalent and, in my opinion, impeding the progress that we need to move forward with this plan. As far as I can see, it's your job to do what is in the best interest of the entire community and not just the loudest people that are against, you know, we don't want anyone living in our backyard. This also includes the municipality, so I understand what, you know, the Dare County, what you have done as a board to try to move forward this issue as well. So really, I guess, what does it say about a community that supports the construction of massive homes for tourists, many of which are located in their backyards, and also negatively affects the environment, but then balks at constructing homes for locals such as teachers, firefighters, waitresses, et cetera? Thank you.
Next is Robert, looks like Sam Paddy.
Sam Hardy.
Sam Hardy, I'm sorry.
Good morning, Commissioner. Welcome, Chair. Yes. My name is Robert Zampardi. I'm from Rocky Mountain, North Carolina, and now for something completely different. I'm an outsider. I'm a solution-oriented person, and I don't doubt, and I am very ignorant on a lot of what's come up as far as development goes, but I do agree with, a hundred percent with Cindy, we need a multi-pronged approach. What's, what's stopped the forward movement in affordable housing, from my observation, is a mixture of pride, some fear. What's gonna, what has to change? There's all kinds of ways to look at this. Do you have public buildings that aren't fully utilized? Is there property that isn't utilized to its best, to its best method that it can be restructured? Can we do something with some mixed-use zoning? Is there an opportunity to split zoning? Clearly, I didn't have a prepared statement. Whoever follows me will do very well. But I am acutely aware, I bought a long-term rental home, and every single day in Avon, every single day, somebody pounded on that door, wanting to know when it was gonna be done, wanting to know when they could move in, every single day. So, again, maybe, maybe there's a few things, and some of these things aren't pleasant. Maybe increasing the occupancy tax will relieve some of the rentals. And I have, well, I have short-term rentals, and this is not exactly in my best interest, but it has to be multi-pronged. One thing is not gonna do everything. We need more housing on the island, because if you put more off the island, you're just gonna increase traffic. With every action, you're going to have a reaction. So there's, I think there's a lot of little things we have to look at. And this one, I'm completely ignorant about, but it popped into my mind, I don't understand why there isn't some sewer system someplace and water treatment plant someplace. I think that would also be able to increase housing in areas where public health is an issue. Let's see what else I got to do. Possibly liverboards on the marinas. I mean, it is an urgent, urgent issue. Everybody in this room knows it. Look at how full the room is. I'm stating the obvious. So again, I don't know anything about this thirty-five million dollar project, doesn't sound like a solution, it sounds like something, but I think we have to look at other things, smaller things, everything. Again, underutilized public property is an option. No, that's all I got. Thank you all very much.
Susan Bothwell.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Susan Bothwell. I'm in, live in Axhead, and I'm also on the Board of Education. Obviously, with the numbers of people that are here, this is a very tough subject for you all to be dealing with. I appreciate Chairman Woodard's opening comments, explaining all that this board has accomplished in recent times, and yes, this new issue is quite controversial. And I also appreciate the fact that you didn't call it affordable housing, because I don't think it's necessarily called affordable housing. I think it's necessary, and I think it's essential. We need it for our teachers, mostly, firefighters, nurses, restaurant workers. This, this community will not survive if we don't have people that can work here. That's really all I have to say, so thank you.
Asher Daniels.
Hello, everybody. My name is Asher Daniels. I was born and raised in Seannick, Wanches, North Carolina. I'll be honest, I'm kinda terrified. I've always, like, imagined seeing myself on, like, Channel Nineteen, and this is kind of a dream come true. But, aside that point, as you can tell from my attire, I am a cook at one of the numerous restaurants here on this lovely Seannick location, and I often see some of you guys coming and eating with us. And I'm lucky enough to be able to come into work slightly late in order to speak with y'all today, so I'm gonna pull out my wallet and give you an idea how much it's costing me to be here today. Twenty dollars. You can kinda see on the camera there, twenty dollars, Andrew Jackson, great president. Anyway, so what does twenty dollars really mean to you guys versus what does it mean to someone like me? As we go into it, hmm, sorry. From working in the restaurant industry to packing fish, I have a good amount of experience in numerous, I'll call it grunt work industries that kinda make up really this island. The people who I think of when I think of Dare County, I think of the people I worked with who are really, like, on the boat with me packing fish, people are really, really sweating it out, or make sure that, like, everybody, whether it's locals or tourists alike, can get the products they really need. And another thing I'm thinking about is when I'm trying to find an affordable place to live, when it costs, when I only make about, like, twenty bucks an hour, and that's before all taxes are taken out, and you kinda look at, in order, like, a minimum rental around here is about, I think I literally checked the other day, and it was just like a bedroom, not like an apartment, a bedroom for, I believe, seventeen to eighteen hundred dollars a month, and that's before utilities, that's before everything else. And even with, like, one job, working over forty hours a week, et cetera, et cetera, I remember there used to be some kind of math equation for, where it's like, you should only pay, how was it, fifty percent of your income going towards rent, right? And with that kinda numbers, I don't think it's really feasible for a lot of what I'd like to call the grunt workers on the Outer Banks. So one thing that could really remedy it would be able to, you know, have, like, a trailer, you know? If you really have someone you could stay with, you could, like, stay in a trailer or some kind of mobile home, like, maybe on someone you know's property. But I found out that there's ordinances actually by this county that kinda prevent that from happening. And another thing I'm understanding is, a lot of people that I work with is, like, there's very few people that actually really are from here specifically. Most people I work with are coming from, like, Columbia, Elizabeth City, and that's a peck of a drive for really anybody. I'm trying to think. My main point that I wanna leave here is, I really want this place to be affordable. Right now, I'm looking into moving into an apartment in Raleigh, because literally having a spot in Raleigh and driving the commute there and back, even partially, is significantly cheaper and more durable than living right here. Thank you.
Bob Lower.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you so much for this opportunity to address you, and thank you for your work on what I know to be an extremely intractable problem, one the county has faced for many, many years. I came here today because I heard a rumor, and I wanna speak to, I'll just advise you a little bit on what, on that rumor. I heard a rumor that you were going to cut ties and release the thirty-five million dollars that the legislature has allocated for affordable housing. And I wanna urge you to take a different track as you look at that money, and not to just release it, but to go back to the legislature and ask them if they are sincerely interested in solving workforce housing issues in Dare County, to work with you to allocate that money to organizations that are already working on solving that problem. What do I mean? Well, a good example, mentioned already, is Dare Education Foundation, an organization that has proven to be able to provide workforce housing for teachers, and is now looking to expand that portfolio. They could certainly work with a share of that money. The hospital and the YMCA are working, looking for a way to build housing for their staffs, much needed in the county. Again, they could, they could benefit from a portion of that money. Rumor the end is providing, trying to provide sustainable housing for unhoused, to get them back into the workforce, so they can get into stable housing. Again, an organization that could provide it. This county, working with the Chamber of Commerce many years ago, formed an organization called the Outer Banks Development Corporation. While we can debate its past legacy, I would present to you that a similar organization formed today could take that thirty-five million dollars and use it to change the landscape in affordable housing, perhaps even restart a program, a development that was killed in two thousand eight in the housing market in the, in the Bowser Town area. We need, obviously, we need affordable housing, but we can solve it with groups here in Dare County. I wanna specify that I do not represent any of those groups. I'm speaking strictly as an individual, but I would encourage you to go back to the legislature, ask them if they are interested in serving work, in solving workforce housing issues in Dare County, and if they are, to work with you to solve our Dare County problems, working with our Dare County groups. Thank you very much.
Next is...
Next is Wood Barron.
Welcome, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here on a personal issue. It's about the affordable housing. I live in Kitty Hawk Estates and have lived there for over thirty years now, and we have flooding issues back there often, just from the rain. We get a normal rainstorm, and I have water up to my front porch. And we are concerned that with the, if there was construction along Windsor Place, with the high-density housing and pavement and all that, that it's going to worsen the flooding to such an extent where we could be dealing with serious issues to our, our homes and damage, as, as it is now. I haven't seen damage, but if we were to cover up those lots with fill and pavement and high-density housing, we could be looking at a real issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Aida Havel.
Welcome, Aida.
Good morning. My name is Aida Havel, and I live in Salvo. As some of you may know, I am a divorce attorney. I am also running for Dare County Commissioner from Hatteras Island. The contract with Coastal Affordable Housing LLC has all the hallmarks of a shotgun wedding. Why do I say that? Well, on November 9th, 2021, Coastal filed articles of incorporation. Nine days later, on November 18th, Governor Cooper signed into law the state budget with a $35 million provision for Dare County. December 12th, Dare County issued a request for qualifications. January 18th of 2022, Coastal submitted its response, and February 22nd, 2022, Dare County selected Coastal at a meeting just three months after Coastal was incorporated and just three months after the budget was signed into law. Since that three-to-four-month period at the end of 2021 and going into early 2022, we've had this bad agreement baby between Coastal and Dare County. This bad agreement baby is now over two years old and still hasn't produced anything. Instead, two years after this shotgun marriage, we got legislation curtailing towns' abilities to enforce zoning regulations or regulate housing developments. And that provision applied only to Dare County. This shotgun marriage is looking worse and worse. The people who signed the pre-development agreement, to my knowledge, have never come to a public meeting. They have never given any interviews to the media. Where is J. Jordan Hennessy? Where is Robert W. Ferris? Where is Aaron K. Thomas? Where is Judge Marion R. Warren? Where is any representative from Metcom, the general contractor? And I have three other questions. Number one, Exhibit C to the pre-development contract says, "All expenses on Exhibit C above will be payable by the county to the developer on a monthly basis during the pre-development phase. Coastal will submit a monthly invoice to the county that is due within fourteen days." This has apparently not been done, as we've seen only two invoices, one dated May 8th, 2023, and one dated February 14th, 2024. Why were invoices not submitted monthly? Two, both of the invoices listed $10,000 per month for developer overhead. Eighty thousand dollars on the first invoice and ninety thousand dollars on the second invoice. Now, in my world, overhead means rent, but I don't think it's for rent, because if it had been for rent, the invoice would have said for rent. I don't know what other overhead there might be that is $10,000 a month. Number three, the two invoices also had a line item for miscellaneous costs totaling It's a drop in the bucket, but it's also a lot of money. What were those miscellaneous costs for? There's a provision in the contract that says that time is of the essence. There's also a provision in the contract that says that in the initial phase of the contract, approximately 300 to 400 multifamily units will be built. To date, not one has been built. And yet Dare County said on its own website that Coastal Affordable Housing has indicated to the board that it intends to construct up to 400 housing units in Dare County by the end of 2023. Not to stretch a metaphor too far, but this shotgun marriage has been a disaster. It's time for a divorce. Now, I don't like to make criticism without also offering a creative suggestion or solution, and I think that many of the suggestions that particularly Cindy Holder and Bob Mueller made were great suggestions, and I like, I would like to add one more. I live on Hatteras Island, and my suggestion is that you use some of that $35 million, if possible, to buy the old abandoned water park in Rodanthe. And to turn it into perhaps some essential housing or workforce housing in the summer. If you go down to Hatteras Village and you see those brightly colored little cabanas that are for rent, they are tiny houses. Perhaps you could make slightly larger tiny houses and put it on that abandoned water park property. There are fourteen acres there, and I, I don't see any reason why you couldn't negotiate with the owner, buy that property, fix it up. I've heard comments that nobody will commute across the bridge from Hatteras Island. I don't think that's true at all. People are commuting from Elizabeth City and Terrell County every day. I come up the beach routinely from Salvo, and it is thirty-minute drive, easy and beautiful. Thank you for your time.
Harbor, is it Maddenett?
Okay, my name's Harbor McDaniel. I'm from Kill Devil Hills, and I'm fourteen years old. I'm named after Silver Lake Harbor and Ogre Coke, and my little sister Avalon is named after Avalon Fishing Pier. My sister and I have grown up here at the beach, surfing, hiking in Axhead Woods, doing cartwheels down Jockeys Ridge and more. My dad grew up here doing the same, fishing, surfing at Avalon Pier, doing dumb stuff that my sister Avalon has taken after. I love where I live. I get to go surfing every day, be able to walk to the beach, fish, ride bikes, hang out with my friends, and plenty more. First, Jockeys Ridge is the tallest-living sand dune system on the Atlantic coast. Many people enjoy activities the sand dune offers, like swimming in the sound, fishing, hang gliding, sandboarding, and more. A few years ago, when my mom was in Nashville, she and her Uber driver were having a conversation. He had brought up, he had brought up where she was from, and my mom began to brag about the beautiful area she was gifted to live in. The driver, the driver commented that he had been there when he was a young adult, and he had helped build the mini golf course that used to be the base of Jockeys Ridge. Although he is just a stranger, this place sparked an immediate conversation. Once you've been here, you always want to come back. Jockeys Ridge is also home to many species of wildlife, some including raccoons, rabbits, Luna moss, sorry, which are endangered, red foxes, gray foxes, opossums, and whitetail deer. Although foxes feed on anything, especially fruits and small mammals, the persimmon tree is one of the, sorry, the persimmon tree is one of the important fruit sources for the foxes in the fall. The opossum is the only marsupial in North America. The whitetail deer is a frequent visitor of the vegetarian, vegetated areas of Jockeys Ridge. The trees and shrubs offer protection, resting areas, and food. During the deer's search for food, they travel between Jockeys Ridge and Axhead Woods. If the home to these animals isn't protected, many of them will be without the necessities that the dunes provide. I dream of coming back to this magical place without it looking like any other overly-developed beaches. I want to be able to come and raise a family here and introduce my children to where my name originates. Our friends tell us how lucky, lucky we are to live here and how it gets under their skin after they visit once. Although places with huge skyscrapers and rentable electric bikes are fun, there's really no other place like our beach. Our wide-open spaces, family-owned restaurants, communal spirit, and small-town feel really makes our beach one that will be hard to forget. I attend Outer Banks Monastery Collective in Axhead, and my teachers and parents have taught me to voice my opinion and stand up for what's right. Teachers have always said, set a good example. How are our decisions affecting the children? How are your decisions affecting us? All opinions matter, our future matters. That's why I'm here today, to ask you to preserve our community. I'm told to set a good, good example. Now it's your turn to set a good example for our future generation. Thank you for your time.
Amy Phillips. Amy Phillips.
Good morning, Commissioners and all citizens of Roanoke Island and Dare County. I, I have a thought that when the COVID came, a lot of people sold their homes for a lucrative amount of money to outsiders. There went some of the affordable housing. Some of the rental properties that were here were also sold because of the lucrative situation. And then we have a lot of Airbnbs that have popped up all over the county, and I realize people want to make money, but how much money is necessary versus the day-to-day lives of the people who support the tourist industry here? They need houses. They need affordable living. We've built a lot of houses in Dare County since I've been here over twenty-four years, but I haven't seen affordable housing being built very much. I feel like we cater to people that are not, that come in here, and I feel that we don't focus enough on affordable housing for the people that support this Dare County. So, I don't know, maybe if we didn't have quite so many Airbnbs, or we even have a fair number of non-owner occupied houses that are weekly rentals in the summer, and they, they're owned by locals here. And that, that is a problem in of itself, because they take up houses, they buy houses that are, that they can afford, they renovate them, they rent them on a weekly basis, and then we have people coming from Elizabeth City and other places to work here, and, you know, it's about quality of life, too, to me. It's about quality of life. How many people can Dare County have living here full-time? You know, more is not necessarily better. I feel that we need to take care of our own, and we need to take care of what we've got. Our natural resources can't withstand the influx, the water resources, the land, the quality of living. You know, I live in Manio. I can't go downtown in some of these functions, because A, I can't find a place to park, B, my own personal issue, I don't like big crowds. So, I'm not as much a part of the community as I used to be when my husband was living. So, I applaud all of the details and the things that others before me have said. It makes a lot of sense, and I particularly like the idea of having a task force that visits citizens of the county and gets their opinions of what needs to be done. The other thing is schools. If we keep adding and adding, we're not going to have enough schools, and we don't have places to build schools. We're, we're doing this college program for seniors in Dare County in high school, and we say that we're going to utilize the teachers that we have. Well, we already don't have enough teachers, so we're going to need more teachers. I just, I think we need to look out in the future more and remember the past and what we have done that has not worked for the people that live here. So, that's, it's disjointed. I apologize that I'm not prepared for today, but I will tell you that I see what's happening in Dare County. I've been here long enough that I don't like what is happening everywhere. There are a lot of good people that live here. There are a lot of people that want solutions to the problems, but we have to work with you all in order to have solutions. Thank you.
Jason Fleck.
Fleck. Thank you. My name's Jason Fleck. I grew up in Conlon Harbor, and I actually thought I was way back on the list. So, I had a little prepared statement from Katie, because I was unprepared. It's nine AM on Tuesday in our work, and actually, there's honestly surf, too, so that's pretty important in my life. So, like, I encourage all y'all Dare County officials to take back the state money and publicly recognize the conflict of interest from one of the principal owners of Jordan Hennessy. His involvement in crafting legislation has stripped, will strip the rights from the towns' citizens, and is wrong and needs to be acknowledged by putting an end to this business. Trust in Dare County officials needs to be restored. And obviously, I didn't come prepared, so then I was sitting here listening to y'all talk, and basically, I've been coming to meetings lately, because I'm just shocked on what's going on on this beach. Like, it's appalling, the decisions on what's being done, like, who wants to cut down Axhead Woods and build housing? Or the mayor of Kill Devil Hills lost his election, basically, because he went against the golf, the Frisbee Golf Course, because he wanted to cut down the woods for housing back there, which is ridiculous. We need nature on the beach. And now I'm hearing that y'all want to take protection away from Jockeys Ridge, which I just don't understand how it's even fathomable. I don't know, and this is where me being unprepared is my fault, because I don't know who's responsible for a lot of these building decisions, and these decisions might not be y'all. But someone needs, like, step up and change something. We have, like, if you go to get a, and it's not, it's housing everything. Like, we can't even get eye doctor's appointments on the beach, because it's, like, six months out, or a doctor's appointment, because there's nowhere for doctors to live. And meanwhile, we're building gas stations, more gas stations. We've got another Wawa, two, two down from two gas stations. We got more car washes and marshals. It goes on and on, all the bad business decisions are being made on this beach for stuff we don't need. We need doctors, dentists, eye doctors, like, common essentials. Like, our beach doesn't have it, because there's nowhere for these people to live anymore. And I wish I was more versed in who is responsible for this stuff, because I'd love to come at y'all with the "this board's responsible for" slogan, because, like, yes, y'all are responsible for a lot of great things, but, like, honestly, there's a lot of bad things happening on this beach. It's sad what the speech is turning into right now. We, we have a sugar, more sugar kingdoms than we do frigging eye doctors. Yeah, yeah, it's, and like, so, like, honestly, I had no reason to get involved in politics or whatever you want to call it. I'd never want to be involved in this kind of stuff, but, like, it makes, like, I shouldn't even be here speaking right now, but it's absurd what's going on. Like, the fact that y'all are, like, looking at this housing issue from giving this guy $35 million, and I only know the details, but it's, what I hear is just absurd. And thank you, the divorce attorney back there. She was, man, I can't believe what she even had to say. But we have plenty of housing here. Maybe start doing regulations on Airbnbs. The Airbnb market's falling right now. If you look at Craigslist right now, all the only long-term rentals are fully furnished houses going for over $2,000 a month. And why? Because they're Airbnbs that people bought, thinking they're going to make money on this beach. There's a lot, like, I don't have solutions, and I didn't come here with them, because I was unprepared. I really didn't think, I was driving to work and I came here. So, like, I, like, I came very unprepared, and it upsets me, because I need to be more involved in the politics of this beach, because it's, like, yes, and hopefully Katie steps up, because she's been very informative on this whole thing, and thank you for your time. I need, want to leave a minute and a half for the first speaker that she got mine, so, you know, hopefully y'all do better. And, like, honestly, and I know Irving, since I was a kid, I worked with Irving on one of my first jobs at RV, so, like, I've been here for a while, and I just, you know, this beach is, it's in a sad state right now. So, y'all have a good one. Thank you.
Olivia Pratt.
Hello, my name is Olivia Pratt. Let me get to the right page. All right. My name is Olivia Pratt, and I've been a Dare County resident for most of my life, almost thirty years. For six of those years, I was a- For six of those years, I was a kayak tour guide down here. A statement I found myself regularly saying was that one of the things Dare County does right is understanding the need to protect our natural environments and resources, as this is what makes the Outer Banks so special for those of us who live here and vacation here. This current decision to move, to strip Jockeys Ridge of its area of environmental concern status has made that statement a lie. If this is allowed to happen to Jockeys Ridge, which is the largest sand dune on the East Coast and a major tourist attraction to this beach, what else would we be willing to let happen for a dollar? A dollar that our greater community as a whole would never see? I implore the decision makers to understand the dangerous precedent this would set for our county and return the $35 million and look for a real solution. How long before we allow similar actions to happen to Nags Head Woods or to our national shoreline or our vital estuaries? Or allow our wild horse colonies to suffer? This beach already has affordable housing. It's made up of the hundreds of houses that sit empty a majority of the year just to be filled for a few months come summertime. This beach already has workforce housing in the 30-plus bedroom houses that are becoming more and more present on our beaches that are also just filled for a few months of the year. The conversation needs to be refocused to limits and restrictions on Airbnb and verbiage rentals with decisions in favor of the working people, not just the people who vacation here and the people who have money to make the decisions. This decision should not be about adding more to our already fragile sand bar, but should be used, but by using and reforming what we already have. I, like most of you, see the desperate pleas for housing on the housing pages on Facebook. I, like a lot of my peers, are no longer in a position to afford a house here, not necessarily because I can't afford it, that is a case of it too, because there's simply none left, because they are all being bought by Airbnb or by people who are doing Airbnb and verbiage rentals. And I implore you, the decision makers, to rethink this and return that $35 million before we allow this dangerous precedent to be set. I want to thank Katie Morgan, who has been very vocal and open with this and very transparent online with sharing these issues. And I want to thank a few of the other folks who have made their statements today. Thank you.
Eddie Goodrich?
How are you? Good morning. My name is Eddie Goodrich. I've lived in Dare County for over 40 years. I'm in the real estate business. What I was going to say today, parallels basically what Mayor Mueller said. You know, there's always the who, what, when, and where in everything that you do. And we always, we know everything. The only thing that we don't know right now is where. And we seem to be having a hard time with that. I would recommend, just as Mayor Mueller said, go back to the legislature. Ask them to change the legislation. Allow the county to use the $35 million to purchase property throughout Dare County that's earmarked for essential housing. And until you do that, you're dead in the water. Because unless you have a place to build, you can't do anything. That's all I need to say. Thank you.
Karen Blows?
Karen Blows? Thank you. I'd like to thank all the commissioners for giving me a chance to speak because I've never spoken at a, a board of commissioners meeting and I'm not nearly as clever as Aida Havel. But I would like to say something. I come from Duck, you know, the north end of the county. And I used to work in construction and development. And so I'm familiar with the concept of public-private partnerships. And I've worked on a number of very large ones that have been a good mechanism to provide infrastructure to places where it's difficult to get funding to give a community some of the things they need, like roads and bridges and housing. But typically, in those kind of public-private partnerships, there is transparency as to the bidding. So as Mayor Mueller said and some of the others, I'm not one to look a gift horse in the mouth. So as a voter and a taxpayer, you know, I don't like returning $35 million that might come to someplace where I live. But I would say that the origin of this gift is certainly not conventional in terms of the way public-private partnerships are done in other parts of this state and in other parts of the United States. And what I'd really like to say is, is that at the end of this effort, I think everybody in this room has heard that what we need is three to 400 units of workforce housing. So I'm asking you all, as the stewards, what is our taxpayer money, some of which is finally coming back from other parts of North Carolina to us, to, to look at what it is that you spend and not to just willy-nilly accept what has been submitted. Because for this particular group of developers in comparison to others I've worked with on larger projects, the rate of spend is extremely high and the return is particularly meager. And, and I would encourage you that although the pre-development contract that you sign doesn't require milestone achievement, this group is well behind in the timeline. They're over budget in some of the categories. They give all the folks who work for a living in this room concern because they spent a lot of money with lawyers in Raleigh and other towns talking to each other at the expense of this fund. So if, if we just keep approving pre-development without having any milestones for achievement, we're looking at spending $1.3 million. We've already spent about a million of the $5 million they have in pre-development. And all we've really seen so far is maybe a placeholder option on a swampy piece of property that might not work. So I, I would just ask as, as the stewards of our public dollars, that maybe we should require some achievements before we just continue to reimburse the cost so that five years from now, I'm not back here a little grayer making the same comment, that I hoped we would end up with some housing at the end of a housing effort and that we didn't just create kind of a fun taxpayer-based annuity for a developer to entertain themselves for five years, but not give us any housing at the end. Thank you.
Alan Creach?
Good morning. Thank you. I really want to reiterate just a lot of what's already been said. I really like what the divorce attorney had said. You know, that the timeline and the optics of that timeline as, and some of the contract details, as my sixth grader would say, they're sus. And, you know, I like what Mr. Mueller said. Trying to present some different options. Like others have said, taking $35 million just right out is a hard hit for the, for the county. So try to go back to the legislature, try to control the money rather than giving it to one group, one organization, one person. I would like to, some of the housing aspects, I'm a Realtor. I'm not for really legislating what somebody can do with their personal property. A lot of the people that I know buy Airbnbs, they fix them up with their blood, sweat, and tears. And that's how they afford to stay here. Because that's creating income for them. And the big houses, those are all jobs. And that's what brings people in. The big event homes do make us unique. I'm not really in favor of them. I would like to, as a Realtor for my family, I'd like to sell every single one of them. But I'm not really in favor of building more of them. The Killalva Hills Cluster Home is a cluster something else. And they're, they're starting to address that. And hopefully, we can address the housing situation in a more equitable way and in a way that doesn't hurt the environment and doesn't just line the pockets of one particular organization. Thank you.
Brittany Slaughter?
Thank you. My name is Brittany Slaughter. I am a lifetime Dare County resident. Instead of the, except for the time I was in Raleigh in college and a couple of winters at Snowshoe. I have nothing novel to say, but I want to reiterate a couple of points that have been made. We all agree that affordable year-round housing is an issue and something needs to be done about it. The strings attached to this loan do not allow for a project that puts enough of a dent in this affordable housing crisis to be worth letting this go through. I don't pretend to have a perfect solution, but I think we as a community can demand that if new housing is built, it undoubtedly has the interest of our community members in mind, not just a select few looking to make a profit. It deserves lots of scrutiny, so thank you for taking the time to hear us out today. Return this loan or amend it to where it serves our community better. Let's prioritize some integrity for this project and move forward with a real solution. Restore the trust that we should have in our representatives by cutting ties with Coastal Affordable Housing LLC. You've accomplished so much here that is good and we appreciate all of that. But at the same time, we demand a better option for this particular issue. Thank you.
Josh Caffey?
Good morning. My name's Josh Caffey. I'm a Manio resident. And yeah, I have nothing new or novel to say either. I think it's all been said previously, much more eloquently than I could put it myself. And the big thing here is, is really just the, the legislation, how it was written for the $35 million, how it's coming through, especially through Coastal Affordable Housing. There seems to be a huge conflict of interest, especially in regards to Jordan Hennessy. So I just wanted to, to reiterate and really bring that to a point that we really want to return this money so that we can find a better solution, many of which have been already recommended today, multi-pronged approaches to this, and I feel we should pursue those. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Anne Dornellis? Did I pronounce it correctly?
You did, you did. Actually, you just say every letter, the last name. It's Anne Dornellis. Anne Dornellis, okay. I also came without meaning to speak. I was asked as I was coming in the door, do you want to speak? And it's such an important issue that I decided to take the opportunity. There's, there's a few different things that I think are key that you keep hearing from many, many people. The transparency around this action is kind of amazing as far as the lack of it. I also was in the, in the business of approving very large multimillion-dollar projects. And then my husband is in commercial construction, so he's very used to change orders and billings and invoices. And what little we've heard is truly stunning. Never in the company that I worked for could you have gotten money for the types of invoices that have been put forward. So that's critical. The multi-pronged approach, I love that idea. We do have an incredible shortage of space. So repurposing buildings and maybe creating tax incentives for people that rent during the summer, create a tax incentive for them to have, convert over to a long-term rental. I know that there's so many wonderful ideas out there. You've got the housing people that are, you know, signed up. If they wanted to each bring, come forward with five suggestions, you would probably be buried in ideas. But it could be very powerful because you never know when maybe the 15th idea that somebody comes up with is the one that saves the day or starts the process. Because as everybody's talked about, this is a very long-term, significant thing. I did not tell you where I'm from. We're in the town of Duck, which we love. We've been homeowners since 2013. We moved completely in 2022. We love it here and we see that it's a very, very big challenge on the housing front. That's all.
Griffin Glover?
Howdy. Griffin Glover. I hail from Manio, North Carolina. Grew up here most of my life. The one thing I'm going to say, and this is the most important, what's done is done. We got to move forward ultimately. But when it comes to investment, the fact that at the end of the day, two-thirds of this county is water. Other third that's land, 90% is protected somewhere or another. That's the rough cut. The land that's left is either already been developed to some degree or is in some shape that needs serious work. What I ultimately propose mostly is more of a deregulate, deregulation of zoning and other forms of taxes so that encourages more long-term rental. But at the same time, what I'm ultimately advocating for is more of a political and cultural question. The political is, as much as we do want to encourage Currituck and Terrell to have a development, creating links, I'm all for that. The more that we shift it out of Dare County, my big concern is that Raleigh will get further involved. And if Raleigh gets further involved, the people of Dare County will have further and further no say in it. And the culture one I want to bring up is, we all know Dare County is a special place. It gets talked about the land. But the thing that doesn't get nearly enough credit is that the people of Dare County are special. It is really the citizenry that has been here for generations, some even before the signing of the Constitution, that are ultimately what makes Dare County special. And I don't want to see Dare County end up the same way that 17 down Wilmington is, South Beach, Jackson Hole, Cape Cod, Key West. All towns that ultimately kind of bent out to the way of commerce and further development and over generations, some of, you know, beyond the reach of people in this room, ultimately lose their culture in their way. If you go down to Key West there, there are very few Key Westers. If you go down to 17 down Wilmington, there are very few Hoytoiders left. That is ultimately the main impact that I'm worried about if we further do outside investment. I get it. Big rental homes get 12K, 18K a week sometimes, up and down 12 all day of the week on the summer. It's hard to beat that. Most of these people already signed a 20-year, 30-year loan. But what I'm saying is if we don't take a political solution on our own end and control what we can, the decision won't be made by us. It'll be made without us, by whoever. That's my piece.
Doc Sawyer?
Welcome. I'm Doc Sawyer, owner of already Sawyer Motor Company, car dealer. And as a car dealer, you know, we do all kinds of things to sell cars. So I'm, I'm here just to offer not the solution, but another solution. Maybe it's something to look at differently. All I know is what I know and what I don't know, I don't know. My 55 years of driving Highway 64 and driving 17, picking up cars, buying cars, going up, I see what I see. And some definitions of affordable housing. One of it is getting workers just to come to work here. They may not want to live here, but they want to come here and work to make life easier. I had three workers who live in Currituck and I had three workers who live in Columbia. And all I know is what I know is when the four lane got completed in Currituck, I saw people leaving Dare County and moving into Currituck because the land was cheaper. They could build a home cheaper and live. Now those housing values have gone up over there. So what I say is, is one type of solution to look at, something different to look at, would be to look at a partnership with Hyde and Terrell County. I haven't heard that yet in the last five, six, seven years. And you're, you are already in a partnership with Hyde and Terrell. I think with the nine and 101, that was a great thing to do. You're in a partnership. You offer, you offered them something that they needed. Well, I think Hyde and Terrell have something they can offer us and that's some land that's cheaper. Sunday I came from, I came down Moayak and I saw some farmland that had turned into a, a, of housing, whether it's affordable or not. It's, it looked like it was cheaper than normal, but I see that. And you know why? Because Virginia Beach doesn't have anywhere to live. So now people are moving into North Carolina. So I think if we look westward into Hyde and Terrell, Dare County, you have something else you can offer them. Education, water, schools, or something you can offer them. And they have something they can offer us. I just say, look at it. Form a partnership with them. I made this map here for you to look at because what I know is what I know. In my years of traveling, one thing I noticed is that if you look at Myrtle Beach, one day I was going down the waterway and I saw a bridge that was built over the waterway. And on both sides of the bridge, there was no roads. And I thought, why in the world were they doing that inside? And on both sides of the bridge, there was no roads. And I thought, why in the world were they doing that in South Carolina? I got 10 miles down the waterway, another bridge was built over. They realized they had to get workers to the beach. And to do that, they had to have connectors to get there. John Bone told me in high school that people go where the roads go. And the roads go, four lane up there, people went there. If you look at this map, you'll see the roads from Raleigh to I-40, that's the drag strip to 40. If you look at going to the other, in North Carolina, we have three tourist areas. We have the Wilmington area, we have the Beaufort-Moorhead area, and we have us. Well, if you look at those four lanes, it gets people there easy. If you look at the one going to Moorhead, they have Highway 70, which is where, now the state is building another four lane right above it, I-42. Look at our orange streak that I drew for you. It stops in Columbia. And now we got a, we got a bottleneck right there in Columbia. So I'm not suggesting to build a Speedway, yeah, I mean Speedway drag strip from Columbia, but give us a four lane so that traffic can move slowly. I travel these roads all the time. And in the summertime, when a, when a camper is being pulled to come down here and a tire blows, it blocks up traffic. When the bridge does, yes, we're getting a bridge. I'm kind of like Mark Bass. I, I stop at all the holes and eat in gas stations to see people. And I ask them, I go to Food Line in Plymouth. Yes, I stop in Piggle Bigley in Plymouth and get certain things. And I ask them, I said, "Why, why don't you come to work in Dare County? You can make $5 more an hour." And you know what they all say? "Oh, I'm afraid that bridge is going to get stuck and I can't get home." Or "I'm afraid I'm going to hit a bear." I'm afraid that traffic's going to get bogged up because somebody's driving 50 miles an hour in a 55. I'm not suggesting making a drag strip, like I say, but make traffic so it can flow. Why is it we have four lanes going to our other beach areas but not to where we are? We're getting shunned off because we're getting a four lane from Norfolk to Williamson, and we're kind of getting shunned off, so. But people go where the roads go. If I look at Royal Farms, and why are you spending 25 million bucks in Columbia and in Plymouth? The economic data shows that people are going to start to come to Dare County from the other way. So if we can, if, if you can find, look, look at a partnership with land over there, maybe that's a place where people can build a little bit cheaper. Thanks.
Hello. All right. I'm Katie Morgan. I'm from Collington. I urge Dare County officials to either return the state funds or go to the state and rewrite the legislation. If you can get the legislation changed, removing all of the strings attached to this money, you must break ties with Coastal Affordable Housing immediately. I feel it's very important to publicly acknowledge the conflict of interest arising from the involvement of one of its principal owners, Jordan Hennessy. It's fundamentally wrong for Dare County to be totally aware that Jordan Hennessy had a hand in shaping legislation that strips our towns and citizens of their rights only to continue doing business with him. Lately, I've faced requests to provide sources and evidence for my assertions, which strikes me as ironic, considering the lack of accountability of this board. All I've done is request public records, read them, and I am trying my hardest to educate the public, which I honestly really feel should be y'all's job. Rather than disregarding and analyzing the perspective of a lone Dare County resident, it's crucial, crucial for leadership to demonstrate honesty and transparency. If trust in y'all were stronger, fewer people would lend their ear to my voice. I am trying to maintain hope that our elected leaders will prioritize the well-being of our Dare County citizens. Yielding decision-making power to Jordan Hennessy and his associates to dictate Dare County's future is not acceptable in any arena. And I, I want to just also say thank you for everyone that came out to speak today. I feel like this speaks volumes. Thank you.
That's everyone who signed up. Is anyone else like to speak this morning? No, sir. No, sir. Yes, ma'am. If you please state your name and where you're from.
Good morning. My name is Brean Bailey. I'm a former Dare County resident. I currently live in Terrell County. When my sons and I were evicted from our eight-year rental, we became homeless for over a year. And thanks to some really kind and generous people in Terrell County, we are now in a home. I'm here, I wasn't planning on speaking, but housing is obviously an issue on the Outer Banks. In keeping with the divorce conversation, I don't think the toxic relationship is between the county and Coastal Affordable Housing. I think it's between the leaders and the people of Dare County. And I don't think a divorce is needed. I think it needs mediation and therapy. As far, or on behalf of the children of Dare County, nobody cares. They want homes. They want someplace to sleep. They want to eat. They need to get an education. This bickering and this fighting and the conspiracies and the drama, it's, it's ridiculous. This county has been talking about housing for over 40 years. This board has been talking about housing for the last four years. I think there's been, what, three or four companies that have come to Dare County to offer solutions for housing? And the la, or, and two were picked and one walked away. They walked away. Sending back millions of dollars and getting into a big, huge fight isn't a solution for anyone. Nine years ago, I was showed two binders at the school system. Within those binders were papers with names of students on them because they had to be put on a different school bus because they were moving. They were three-inch binders. The binders were full. We were halfway through the school system. There are a lot of solutions to this problem, and yes, some of them are going into adjoining counties. But you guys need to put together a task force, a group of people that are dedicated to fixing this problem, not talking about it anymore, and then putting things in place. Thank you.
...reading back to order and I'll turn it over to your candidate then.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is there other public comment this morning? Anyone else like to speak?
We have one over here.
Okay, come on up, please. Please state your name and where you're from.
Hello, my name's Willow Ray. I'm from Manio.
Welcome, Ms. Ray.
Thank you. I hadn't initially committed to speaking today, but as a person who was born and raised in Dare County, I feel it is my responsibility to show further representation for people of my age and generation. As you've already seen today, we do care. All of us care tremendously. We are aware of the issues and are interested in what goes on in the planning of the towns that we live in. I just recently moved back to the Outer Banks after having to move away five years ago simply because I could not afford to live here. I was able to return only because I am blessed with a family and community that look out for each other, and I was extremely lucky to be offered affordable housing. And let me reiterate that it is the community here that has looked out for me. We look out for each other. We are neighborly, kind, and genuinely invested in each other's wellbeings and future. That is what makes the Outer Banks so special and magnetic. I wanted to say thank you for all that you've done as a board. Like stated by speakers before me, we are grateful, but I think you may be misinterpreting our frustrations and anger as a community. We all know we need affordable housing, but the solution presented is not it. We do not need to be cutting down and paving over what makes Outer Banks what we love. Like Joni Mitchell once sung, "Don't pave paradise to put up a parking lot." There are cookie cutter mini mansions, mini hotels that sit empty most of the year. They continue to be built when we don't necessarily need more of them. We have enough of them. They serve their purpose, but nobody loves them, so maybe regulate how many can be built. Maybe regulate Airbnbs. I don't mean take them away. Some of us need them to afford to live here, but maybe we don't need three, four, or five of them to live here. Mind you, I personally don't think housing should ever be a commodity. I believe in today's world, it is a basic human right. I've talked to so many people who are interested in trailers or alternative housing. I know these style dwellings aren't allowed in many, if not most, of the Outer Banks, but please allow them. And maybe you have concerns for aesthetics, but I believe our concerns for our community, the natural ecosystem and wildlife, and the people that work hard to live here should be our priority. Not to mention, the style of housing can be beautiful. We have so many talented builders and woodworkers that live on our islands. My life partner is one of them. They want to help, so let us have alternative housing such as tiny homes that can be built on trailers and parked in backyards, or designated tiny home communities. Look to towns all around the country and world that have already done this, such as Washington State, for example. I believe there are other solutions. While talking to my mother about the issue, she encouraged me to make sure I fact-checked and further investigated what's going on, which is great advice for anyone, for anything. But I will say, regardless of what I may not know on this issue, it's clear that there is not enough transparency on what's going on to be able to support it. So I recommend we give back the 35 million, because it certainly feels like dirty money at this point, or maybe even better, give it to a nonprofit, such as the Dare County Education Foundation. Not to mention, schools are already overflowing. We have major issues with healthcare on the Outer Banks. There's not enough doctors. Maybe we should focus on our concerns and money on infrastructure. Affordable housing is painful, but there are so many other ways to address this issue, and without the proper infrastructure, affordable housing can never be feasible. What you have proposed so far will not solve our problems. It will only create more unless you give the money to a nonprofit, such as the Dare County Education Foundation. We'd be able to solve all of our teacher issues that we have with this money. People are quitting education jobs at a record rate. We need to take care of our teachers and show them that we value them. Not to mention, our future generations are so important to our own welfare and future of the Outer Banks and world. So let's prioritize our education and who creates it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment this morning? Yes, ma'am, you've already spoken, I think.
Oh, you let us speak once.
Just once, yes, ma'am. Any more public comment? Yes, sir.
Welcome this morning, Johnny.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing us to speak today. My name's John Robinson. I live on Roanoke Island. We don't need to send the money back to Raleigh. What we need to do is redo the legislation that broadens the field to where we can have true workforce housing solutions and people that can put in place and develop workforce housing that we can all be proud of. This board, when this meeting started, Chairman Woodard talked about all the accomplishments that have been done in Dare County. These accomplishments date before this board, and y'all have continued those accomplishments, and y'all have done a good job. But, you know, two and a half years ago, I spoke. I was the only one in this room, and I raised these concerns. I'm not Notre Dame, but some of these things have come back to it. And you shouldn't let this whole situation taint the success that y'all have completed to date, because that's what it is. It's a tarnish on Dare County. And with that, you know, we need to talk about solutions, how we get going. Again, get the legislation changed. Zoning. Zoning is extremely, extremely important. When I moved back to the Outer Banks 20 years ago, while I was still in school working on a master's in landscape architecture and city and regional planning, we worked with the Town of Manio and Town of Manio zoning ordinance. When I returned home, I was the first one that developed workforce housing as a private developer on Roanoke Island, aside from, you know, back there that's behind IGA. But this was a public-private partnership with a private developer. We put in five lots. We also put in restrictions. You can't have any rental back there less than 30 days. With that, we need to think outside the box and put in zoning that encourages proper development. You know, where you're required to use best management practices in treating stormwater, where you're not repeating the same issues in wine cheese with the cluster home development that did not fit into the fabric of the community. And it's really working organically with the community. You know you're off to the wrong start when you're spending a million dollars before you've even had a meeting with the community, with the leadership, where you've gone and had a charrette, where you involve the community in your actions. And that's not how a developer should be. That puts a bad name for development. And with that said, there are large landowners, and I'm fortunate. I still have 300 acres on Roanoke Island. 27 acres of that are uplands that have been delineated. I've done a year's worth of soil study on that property. It has water access. Whatever I do with that property, I will make money. But as I step back and recognize beside my house, we didn't need additional housing there. I offered it to the Coastal Studies Institute, and I think that's a long-term legacy that I can be proud of with the use of that land. My problem with, one of my major problems with this contract that's before us, and I've been told no, that what I'm saying is not true, but the buildings show otherwise. Water Cooper, and we don't have to name names, the one group, that housing was going to be affordable in perpetuity. That land was owned by the county. In this other contract that you have out here, you're still negotiating the rates of affordability, how long it's going to be affordable, and all these things. It's not in perpetuity based on those pre-development agreements. Whatever you need to do needs to be in perpetuity. And I am one landowner. There are other, I'm offering a solution with my property, but there are other landowners. They talked about the property and Rhodanthe Wave Salvo, the old Water Park Village. There's property all over. But, in closing, the least expensive lot on Roanoke Island is $150,000 for a 15,000 square foot lot. I was offered $100,000 for an acre of my property by that same group. The true price that I offered it to, you know, the other group, was half of the property in Axhead. It worked out to a per-unit cost that was less than what they were proposing in Axhead. And just as this contract was awarded, I'm perplexed by how it's continued to go. And in closing, as the yellow light comes on, y'all have a lot to be proud of. We all have a lot to be proud of in this room. We live in a wonderful place, but we just need to reset the button and truly, seven seconds, accomplish the workforce housing. And thank you for your time, and I hope y'all make the right decision. Do not give the money back. Please change the legislation. Thank you.
Other public comment this morning? Anybody else? Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and where you're from.
Reverend Dr. Michelle Lewis, Manio, North Carolina. And I hadn't planned to speak today. I was just coming to listen. I'm from Manio, and my family actually, we're able to trace our ancestry back to the Freedman's Colony that was here and the indigenous people that were here on Roanoke Island. And I come to these meetings, I go to as many meetings as I can, and recently I was in a meeting, and they were talking about housing in the community, and they were like, well, you know, that's why we're still, you know, people can build accessory dwelling units on their property so that if their children want to come home and live, they can build a house. And I was like, but that's not the answer, right? The answer isn't, oh, well, we've got, you know, an extra piece of, we've got some backyard that you can maybe put a studio or an efficiency on, and that's housing. And so I want to suggest that as we look at, how do we approach the housing crisis in our community? But it's not just our community. There's a housing crisis across the country. That we look for creative solutions that include perhaps some more working groups that are made up of just everyday people who want to see some real solutions to the housing problem in our communities, because I think we could benefit from some more working groups, because I know sometimes I look at the groups and I'm like, oh, wow, that group isn't representative of me or the part of the community that I live in. And so thinking about who is missing from the conversation, who's not at the table, who are those voices that are most marginalized that are not heard? Those people that don't have the opportunity to speak. Because, you know, because what's happened is, poor people can't buy houses here. It's not that people can't buy houses. It's that poor people can't buy houses here. And when we have communities where people who are less economically advantaged are not able to live in the communities where they work, like, that's a problem. It's, I'm also a pastor. It's a moral problem. It's a heart problem. It doesn't lead us any closer to what Dr. King called the beloved community. And beloved communities are communities where everyone has the opportunity to thrive, where people can be whole and happy and healthy, and that's what we want. We could talk for days about the lack of access to medical care in our community, to the lack of access to mental health care in our community. So as we think about housing, we also have to think about infrastructure in our communities, too. Do we have enough space in our classrooms? What about roads? What about police? And resources that are going to be needed, police and fire, emergency services? And so I think that, I appreciate the work that you all have done and that you continue to do, but from what I see, it looks like there are some voices and some people who are missing from the conversation, who aren't a part of the conversation, and I would just implore you to make spaces for everyone to have a seat at the table. And I mean, most of us, if the table's big enough, we'll even bring our own chair, right, if we have to? And so just, please, don't forget that there are people who live here, who want to continue to live here, who work here, who also want to be able to buy property, not just be renters, who want to be able to truly thrive. And I think that you all want that for the people in this community, too, so thank you.
Other public comment this morning? Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and where you're from.
Hi, everyone. I'm Ruth Stutzen. I'm a Town of Manio Commissioner, and we do have affordable housing, which is exciting. I've heard a lot of what was said this morning, and I wasn't going to speak, but like many of you, sometimes something tugs on your heart. In my case, I believe it's the Lord. I've been praying about this for over two years. I prayed that God would speak to us as leaders. I pray every single day for every leader in our community that we would have wisdom and discernment to figure out what his plan is, because we're supposed to do his will. We're supposed to serve and be good stewards of the money that he gives us to use from you. So in praying, I prayed fervently that the Lord would speak to us through our citizens. And oddly enough, I see this as an answered prayer, which is really exciting. I'm sure you do, too, because citizen engagement is the goal, because how else would we lead if we don't know which direction you want us to go? A lot of what I've heard is complicated. The Airbnb things are complicated. LLC is buying up single-family homes across the nation, and us destined to have investment firms as landlords and be renters is a future that's panning out in a lot of America. We live in a resort community. It's expensive. It's going to be really hard to live here no matter what. I mean, Disney, once upon a time, looked at the bombing range to develop, so we have a prime piece of land. What I've heard about the money is, and I've done my own homework as an elected official. I researched the RFQ, how it was written. The forgivable loans part of it was very strange to me. I understand there are strings attached to the money, but I also understand how the law works. And we all took civics, I'm pretty sure, and that's why we have lobbyists. We have Johnny Tillot, attorney. Alton, you know that we can lobby for things to be changed in the state halls. We do that all the time. We do that all the time as elected officials. We do it on your behalf, with your money. We hire lobbyists to get things done. So, I look at it as, where have we come in this conversation? Woda Cooper was at the table with Manio, and we turned him down because our citizens told us to. We listened to our citizens. They said, we're concerned about the environment, we're concerned about your, our aging wastewater treatment plant and sewer backing up in our, our yards and our toilets. We listened to our citizens. So I urge you, poll your citizens. The very best thing you could do from this, hire a company like Civic, Civic Plus, I don't know, I'm not endorsing anyone, and poll these people at large. Ask questions, exactly what they want and get their answers. Because unfortunately, what happens in Dare County is, we have very loud voices, sometimes they're business owners that are having issues with housing for their employees, we get that, sometimes they're teachers, sometimes they're landowners that don't want a lot of development around them. We have to hear from everyone. I know we're not a democracy, we're a constitutional republic, as I've been told many times, but on a small scale, we have to listen to our citizens, because we go to the grocery store with you, you're, we represent you directly. So it's important we know what you want. So what I've heard, in the hundreds and hundreds of people that I've asked, not just 10 people out in the community, I ask everybody I get the chance to talk to, is, give all the money to the Dare County Education Foundation and check off a box, solve that teacher problem. We're about to spend $25 million on that early education college. That's a, that's a building, a building that costs $25 million. I hear it's about a thousand square, $1,000 a square foot for buildings of that type to be developed, more than that? Okay, oh, down, okay, I was going off EMS buildings. So I was thinking a school or teacher housing is going to be less than that, so we could solve our teacher problem. And then, as you guys know how Run Hill works, if a teacher isn't occupying the housing, under the laws around government subsidized housing, with this nonprofit housing, the regulations are that then a, a other municipal employee, municipal employee could go in there if a teacher doesn't qualify or a teacher doesn't need it. A state worker can go in there, sheriff's deputies have used it regularly, so it does become workforce housing. If we develop general housing, it has federal law trumps state law trumps local law, basics. Fifth, the Fair Housing Act in America says you cannot say who goes in that housing. If we develop general stock housing, Sue and Bob from Baltimore are moving in. I would, I love it here. My family's been here for 300 years. I'm, I intend to be here. So we have to work with the law. We have to develop housing for our workforce if that's what you want. If you don't want government in housing, you don't want government in housing, but it sounds like they do. So, the, the best solution is to solve the biggest problem on the table, the immediate problem, and just cure the teacher problem. Get really good housing set up for our teachers, and then the overflow of local employees, these essential workers that you guys have been talking about, will be able to go in there. I know that sounds like an easy fix, and you say, ha, ha, okay, Commissioner Stetson, it sounds like you got an easy fix. The truth is, lobby it. Lobby the legislation, work it in our favor. If Raleigh's mad at us because we're not spending the money the way that they wanted us to spend the money, who cares? God will put someone else in that office. God is very clear about what he expects of us on this earth, and he loves this creation. Trees are in the beginning and the end of the book, and he says in Revelation, he'll destroy those that destroy the earth. I've said that before. We need to be mindful of who we serve, and who gave us this beautiful place to live, and it's God. So, I think that I, I would encourage you guys just to try to solve the problem at hand first, and not put any more stress on our infrastructure until we come up with a, a solution to our medical park issue. We need more doctors, so, thank you very much.
Other public comment this morning? Yes, sir. State your name and where you're from.
My name is Malcolm Fear, and I'm from Dare County, more specifically, in Manio. I can't decide if I'm an old timer or an old fart. I've been in this issue a long time, as, as Duke Garrity and Donna Creve, and I see Bob Mueller back there, and Bobby. This was a, an issue 20 years ago, and it's not gotten any better. But the difference is, is issue has risen to the, has raised to the level of the, of the state. North Carolina General Assembly appropriated money, $35 million, a lot of money, to help us fix this housing. Your board, and I've worked with a lot of them about housing, there's never been a board that has addressed the issue like y'all have. Hindsight is 2020. Have mistakes been made, or things that have been done that you'd like to have done different? My guess is yes. I know it is with me every day. Currently, there's $47 million that we're talking about addressing the housing issue. That's a pile of money. There's a lot of different ideas of how to use it. The idea of sending it back today, I don't, I don't agree with that. I would say, let's look at a different way to use that money, and many comments have been about working within the General Assembly, I agree with that. Can we change that legislation so it fits our needs, our constituents' needs, our constituents' desires? I think we can. Something that's not being talked about is, who are the people that need the housing? My guess, many of them today can't be here. They're on the water, they're in the classroom, at the grocery store, then medical offices, then counties' offices at work. They can't be here to speak, but their needs are real, real. I've always been an advocate for a pathway to ownership, homeownership. I've been around long enough, remember Phil House? He was FHA, Danny, remember him? He used to provide housing for people. Back then, when we started this 20 years ago, you'd buy a house for 150, $200,000, which was a lot of money then, but now the average house is over $350,000. We can do better. We are nourishing the beaches to the tune of $220 million. It's necessary to nourish those beaches for those absentee property owners. I would say it is more necessary for our constituents. There are 5,000 some children in our school system right now. Where are they going to live? There's no hope here. But we have solved, through these boards, many difficult issues. I remember my dad was on the water bond, people in Wangees, Mitchell, I think some of them are still mad when my dad goes, they sent water to the beach. I can remember beach nourishment, that was contentious. Schools, there was nothing more contentious than that, I don't believe. But we pulled together and we solved the issue. Bob, through your leadership, through this board, you have formed a task force. Every municipality in the county has agreed to serve. The county's serving, school is serving, the hospital is serving, board of realtors, home builders, and people from the public are serving on that committee. Let them do their job. Let them advise you, let them engage with the public, let us, let us hear what the public would like to see in housing. This issue is too important to fail. And I urge you, through your leadership, to allow us to address this issue through that task force. Again, I want to thank each and every one of y'all for your service.
Any other public comment this morning? I don't see any more hands here. Is there any public comment in Buxton? All right, hearing none, then, Mr. Chairman, we close the public comment.
And that's something I have asked you to handle, so.
So, I want to ask, how do we get here? You have to go back and you have to look at some of the legal stuff. The first problem is that counties and local governments can't build housing. By statute, we're not authorized to do that. If we were, then we could have done something years ago, we could have been building houses as we go, but we're not allowed to do that. So you must have a developer come in, and to get a developer to come in and do something at less than market rates, then you got to incentivize that in some way. And so the question becomes, how do you get a developer to come into Dare County to build housing at rental rates lower than what the market is? And those market rates are what causes, causes our problem. This isn't a new problem, as you've been told many times this morning. I see Bob, I can't remember how many meetings Bob Mueller and I went to years ago, trying to address this same thing. Over time, we've worked with that, we've brought developers in here, we've walked land, the old CDC bought land, the county owned land. Lots of efforts were done to incentivize and bring developers down here, and yet we had no takers for years, and years, and years, and years. And those efforts were unsuccessful, and ultimately, the CDC folded because it really couldn't accomplish anything and didn't do anything. A few years ago, we had an economic study done, and that economic study said that providing housing was the number one economic development thing that we needed to address. That study was done by the folks at NC State. Not long after that, we had members of the business community, we had people from the schools, we had people from the hospital, we had our own staff come to us and say, we got to do something about housing, we're having a time trying to hire people, trying to fill positions. It's not just the lower-income housing, it's all the way up through, you know, the higher incomes, two-income families, there's a housing shortage that's a problem. In response to that study and in response to those concerns, the board began looking at ways to try to solve that problem. A number of us went to Raleigh and, and went to the North Carolina Housing Conference up there and began meeting people who do this kind of work every day. We talked to developers up there that do this every day, we talked to some other local governments up there that do this every day, we talked to the North Carolina Housing Finance officials up there to try to get an idea of how do we move forward, how do we move the needle, all these kind of things.
When, when did we do that, Bobby?
I don't remember the date.
I do. October 2019, four and a half years ago, I was there.
Okay, sure.
And this began?
From, from those meetings, we had developers come to Dare County, we actually walked sites together to try to entice them to come down here and invest, to join with us, to do something. And, you know, we had no takers, we had no interest, they just weren't going to come down here. The incentives that we were able to offer at that time were not sufficient to entice a developer to come down and develop in Dare County. So, why not? And I'm not sure if I know the answer to this, but it's likely because they could invest easier and with less difficulty in the markets that they were in, where there was already an established affordable housing development program. And so they would rather put their money there than try to come down here and do something that wasn't well-established. And we really didn't have any significant local subsidies or plans that we could somehow assist them to do that either. We had land, and we had opportunities for land, but we didn't have, the land wasn't valuable enough to offset the construction costs and the so on, to get rental rates at the rates that we needed them. And so, those folks did not come. So, at that same housing conference, we heard of a group out of UNC, the Development Finance Initiative, and that's a group that works out of the school government, and that's what they do. They do affordable housing, and they come in and act as consultants to local governments all over the state to try to help them address affordable housing problems. We had a number of meetings with them, they came here, we went there. We ultimately ended, entered into an agreement with them for them to be our consultants, and they came in to try to help us. The gist of that deal is, they do the work for us, they don't charge us for the work, but if you're successful in getting a development done, then the developer pays whatever their, their fees are, and any development contracts that we would have had from that would have required them to pay their fees. As we worked along.
If I may, again, county manager, this group, Development Finance Initiative, nonprofit associated with UNC Chapel Hill?
Yes.
And their specific role in life is to work with local governments to help develop and forge partnerships in public-private situations to address housing and development issues. Have I got that right?
Correct.
Thank you.
And then, from their work, they did a survey, they told us what, how much housing was needed, they went through some processes, and part of their contract was for them to go out and solicit developers to try to help us accomplish that. From that, Dare County created a fund of Dare County money for $12 million. And so, we had funding there because in the past, we didn't have sufficient subsidies. So we created a fund to pro, to provide those subsidies, to try to make something work that hadn't worked, and we were going to use the DFI group to help us find developers who would come down here and work as well. As we worked along through that, we got word from Raleigh, from our lobbyists, that the legislature had put $35 million in the budget, and that was to be used to do affordable housing. That was state money that was going to be used, it came out of the ARP money that was going on at the COVID time, and that money was going to be used to do affordable housing. The legislation had strings attached to it. It required it initially to be built in Dare County. It required it that we do an RFQ and solicit entities to come in as the developer to do that. The applicant had to have had involvement in a public-private partnership with a state or local government. Some people have been critical of that, I'll just tell you, that's done fairly often. There's a school in Jones County that was done with a public-private partnership similar. So, the idea of a public-private partnership was something that the state has used, as one of the speakers spoke earlier, to try to lure developers and investors in the counties where you're struggling to accomplish some goal, and we were certainly struggling to accomplish that. So we put out the RFQ. The other thing within that RFQ, the statute said it had to be a forgivable loan, and as a forgivable loan, whoever was the person selected had to create housing at a rental rate lower than market, and the difference between the market rate and the rental rates over 25 years had to equal $35 million. So, basically, they had to give rental savings off of that, their rental rates, off of market rates to create $35 million in savings. If they accomplished that, then it was a forgivable loan, and the state would then forgive the loan. If they did not accomplish that, they were required to pay those funds back. It had to be new construction, and again, as I said before, it had to be in Dare County. We sent out an RFQ, and we got two responses. We got one from the coastal affordable housing folks, and we got one from Woda Cooper. We selected coastal affordable housing, and we selected them because one of the entities that were involved is a group called Metcom. Metcom's from down in Pembroke County, they build housing stock all over the state, they're a big company. If you've been through Plymouth lately, the school that's being built there on the highway is being built by Metcom. They've done these public-private partnerships, I mentioned the one in Jones County, they did that one, and so they've done something in, in this field. The second entity in that group was an architecture firm, and I didn't write the name down, although I know who they are, but that firm had similarly done public-private partnerships throughout the state, and that firm had also done the school that's going on there in Washington County as well. And so, those were two entities that really were a big part of our decision. There was a third entity that came in as a consultant to that group. It was a developer from the Raleigh area that we'd actually tried to get, to come down here to build, and they weren't interested in doing the building, but they were acting as the consultant to them and came to some of our meetings to try to help us talk about how this would work and how it would go forward, and they had experience, because that's pretty much all that they do is affordable housing. So we selected coastal affordable housing. However, you know, Woda Cooper was impressive as well, and we had that other $12 million out there. And so, we decided we would work with them to try to use our Bowser Town track and put our money together, and then they came to us also with the tract in Agshead that they were, had already looked at, had already done the homework on, and were ready to go to, to build on that tract as well. And so we were going to go on a two-pronged approach, we were going to use the $12 million that we We were gonna use the $12 million that we got with Woda Cooper to develop our Bowser Town track, to develop the Nag's Head track that was zoned properly to allow all that stuff, and then work with Coastal Affordable Housing to move forward, to find a track or tracks to build housing with the money that the state gave us. Ultimately, the Woda Cooper project didn't work out, and Nag's Head changed the zoning so that the tract that we were gonna use there was no longer available for that use. And we couldn't work out something with Nag's Head, as the speaker talked earlier, because we couldn't get the sewer that we need there. And Woda Cooper, like many of the developers that we talked to before, have said, you know, we can put our money elsewhere, we can get a return on our money elsewhere, and it's not clear to us that this is something that the community wants or has a stake in in Dare County. And so, they left. Through all these times, and these times overlap, we were still in discussions with Coastal Affordable Housing. Coastal Affordable Housing, the legislation that created this opportunity had some flaws in it. We didn't draft it or get a say in drafting it, so we got it in the draft that it was in. And we had to go back to the legislature to fix those flaws. The major flaw in that legislation was, it used ARP money, which was federal money. It therefore had federal rules attached to it. And those federal rules restricted the ability of not only Dare County, but many other entities throughout the state who got federal money through the ARP, was having a difficult time trying to spend that money because of the strings that were attached on the federal level. We met with the school of government about that, we met with the folks at the Office of Management and Budget in Raleigh about that. We spent a lot of time trying to figure out how to make this work in light of those federal restrictions. And ultimately, the only fix was, the legislature had to go back and change the way they appropriated the money, and rather than appropriated it as ARP money, they had to appropriate it as state funds. And soon as they appropriated it as state money, then those strings no longer attached to the money. That took a long time. The money actually got deposited into Dare County's account in the spring of last year. So, we've had the money since sometime in the April/May timeframe of last year. From that point on, we began talking with Coastal Affordable Housing about, what do we do and how do we go from here? Coastal Affordable Housing was gonna invest $65 million of their money, and we were gonna put in $35 million from the state, and we were gonna wind up with a $100 million project that was gonna create, in the beginning plan, roughly 400 housing units somewhere in Dare County. And they were tasked with finding those housing, those land in the area to do that, they were tasked with finding, how could they do that, and so on. We provided them GIS data with every parcel in Dare County that was above, I believe it was three acres, it might have been five acres, but every parcel that was, had enough size to allow housing to be put on it. And they went through and analyzed each one of those properties to figure out where it was, you know, what the zoning was and all that. There's been some talk about the pre-development agreement. The way these things work is, you do a pre-development agreement, and in the pre-development agreement, you figure out all the things you don't know before you go out and invest in a piece of property, because you don't know what you can do on it till you do your homework on that. We were doing a $100 million project, so we allocated up to $5 million for the pre-development work, because we didn't know how many sites we were gonna have to do it on, we didn't know how many sites we're gonna have to be analyzed. And so, we set that at a number that would allocate an amount out of a $100 million project. The pre-development agreement allowed them to go out and find land, to put down payments on land, to find out if the land was suitable, to do the wetlands delineations, to bring in surveyors, to figure out and negotiate cost, to figure out access, to do the engineering. Every time you looked at a site, an engineer had to look at it and see what kind of a site plan would fit on that site. How would you move the streets? Where would you do this? So, they had to have engineering plans done on each site. The architect then had to take those plans and figure out how and what the buildings would go on that site. They had to do the zoning updates, they had to go figure out how they would make all that work within the zoning regulations that were on the tracks that they looked at. They had to do a market study. In order for them to borrow the money that they were investing, there had to be a market analysis. The bank had to be comfortable that where you're gonna build these things, people will actually rent them and pay rent, because they need that rent to repay that loan. And so, they had to go out and do marketing analysis. And so, when we looked at East Lake, you know, the marketing analysis said, no, you didn't think they could get units there, they couldn't get people to rent those quick enough, and they weren't guaranteed. I don't remember the percent, but there was some percentage of occupancy, I think it was like 92% over the life of the project. They had to have guaranteed occupancy to make the debt service work on the debt. The lenders weren't comfortable with some of these outlying areas, that they could get that kind of rental within the timeframe that they needed, nor keep it rented for the time that needed to be rented to repay those loans. There were tax ramifications. Some of you all talked about tax ramifications. That was important to this, because this loan, the way the legislature set it up, the loan was set up as a grant to Dare County with a repay, they didn't have to repay the loan down the road if they met the guidelines that we talked about. However, from the taxing standpoint, if it was taxed as a grant, then the developer had to pay taxes on that. If it was taxed as a forgivable loan, then the tax ramifications were smaller. They were, everybody, well, that's their problem, but that was our problem too, because it's very important to know what that is, to know how much money you've got to spend. If you had to pay taxes on that $35 million, and you're taking 30 or 40% of it, that's multiple housing units that we could not build, and that changes the scope of a project that we were doing. And so, we had to go through those exercises to find out how much money we had to spend in order to know what we could do and what kind of housing need we could meet. There had to be stormwater work done, and you name it, if you've done any development at all, everything that needed to be done on whatever site you're thinking about had to be done upfront in order to make sure you could do it before you began working on investing $100 million of your money. Remember, the project was state funds of $35 million, $65 million of coastal affordable housing funds for a $100 million project. There's no state or other local funds involved in the project. I'm going through the list here. We've spent roughly $389,000 to date. There's another invoice out there for $274,000. That hasn't been fetted yet by our staff, so that has not been paid. We have $600,000 in an escrow account, ready to buy land whenever that land becomes available. And whenever that pre-development process is done, then we have money sitting there where we could move on land that would be bought for that purpose. All the pre-development expenses were for pre-development costs or reimbursements. To my knowledge, there's been no profit or any money given to Coastal Affordable Housing for them to put into their pockets. Again, for the last year, we have been working with them to find sites, to try to work through that. While we've been doing that, we're also working on a development plan, and the development plan is the second stage in the process. If, once you have a site, once you've overcome all the hurdles I just described to make that site available to build, then you enter into a development agreement with your developer, and that development agreement says, here's what we're gonna build, and here's how we're gonna build it. It talks about the number of units, because that's important. How many units per dollar? What is our per-unit dollar cost gonna be? Is that fair and reasonable? If that number was too small and the profits were too high, then we wouldn't do it. If the numbers were smaller in line with reasonable profits, then we would do it. Our goal was to maximize those dollars, to get as many housing units as we could get, and make sure that we were paying a fair price per unit. So, we had to know where it was going, we had to know how much it was gonna cost, we had to know what the land costs were. And then, we had, somebody talked about it wasn't gonna be rent affordable forever. That isn't the case. The development agreement had to be that it was gonna be in affordable housing forever. So, you had to have in your covenants, if you own the land, you have it in your ground lease, where you lease it back to the developer, which is what would happen with Woda Cooper. If you don't own the land, then you put restrictive covenants on it before you give them the money, so that you now restricted it to the same restrictions that you would have in your ground lease. With respect to coastal affordable housing, the decision on who was gonna own what hasn't yet been made, because we've never gotten to the development agreement, because we never got a particular property before us that we knew it could be built there, we knew how many units, we knew what the costs were. It also had to have rent caps. Under the law, the $35 million that went in for, that Dare County put in, could only be used for rental rates for people who had incomes of 80% AMI or lower. That's somewhere in the $40,000 a year range for a single person. And so, that, if you had $100 million, that meant a third of that project had to be the lower rental income units. By law, we were, there was no way around that. The legislature can't even change that, because that's a constitutional provision. And so, that had to be agreed on, that had to be in the covenants as well. As I told you before, the restrictions on using state money also required them to make sure their housing was below market rates. And so, they couldn't come in and create housing stock at above-market rates, because they can't get the savings they had to get, so that the $35 million wasn't repayable. And so, our agreement was gonna have provisions in it that provides that. All of the rentals, the third of it's gonna be at 80% or AMI or lower, and the remainder of it would be at lower than market rates, but it would hit markets for the teacher and the police officer who between them make $80,000. So, that wouldn't be something you could use local money for, but that would be something that that $65 million that the developer was developing could use it for, and the development agreement would require that. And so, that was part of the negotiations, is to find that market that we're trying to reach, use the funds to reach that market, and restrict those funds to those markets forever. And that would have been in there. So, all other development activities would have been included in that agreement. And before they started, you know, we would have had to have executed that agreement, we'd have to put that in writing, and if we owned it, we would have to record the covenants. I'd say, if we owned it, we would have to sign a ground lease, and if they owned it, we would have to record the covenants to make sure that stuff is there for all time. Again, we haven't gotten there yet, it's not final, because it's been very difficult to agree on everything, because we don't, still don't know where it's gonna be, we don't know what it's gonna be, we don't know how many units. We don't have all that detail yet on what we would need to do to make that final development agreement work. We have met countless number of times, spent multiple hours, having those discussions to try to flesh out sort of a groundwork, so that once we know and we can plug numbers in, it becomes a smoother process to get to a final agreement. But we haven't gotten there yet. During this time, we understand, I mean, we see you all here, this isn't the first time that we've heard this, there's been some, you know, many community concerns. We heard it in Manio, we heard it in Nag's Head, we've heard it from you all, we've heard it with the cluster housing. And so, with those community concerns, you know, we've had to pivot, if you will, with coastal affordable housing, from trying to do one big site to maybe doing multiple smaller sites. By doing that, you lessen the impact in any one area, but by doing that, you also increase the time and the money and the effort that they and we have to put in to find those sites and make them work. And that's kind of where we are as I stand here today. We're waiting on a site or multiple sites. We recognize that we're not gonna be able to build a $100 million project in one place like was originally contemplated. And so, now, they have been, are doing the work on multiple sites to figure out if and where and how it can be done, and trying to come up with housing that can fit in the community within the zoning that's now in the communities within the county. And that brings us, Mr. Chairman, up to where we are right now.
Thank you, Bobby. Appreciate it. Chairman will be back in just a minute. Does anybody on the board have any questions for County Manager with regard to his presentation?
I've got one. There's been several discussions throughout the group to take the $35 million and put it into the Dare Educational Foundation. There's no legal way to do that, correct?
That would require legislation.
Okay.
The state directed this to be a building fund for a private partner, and we'd have to change it to be able to do something else.
Yeah, I had another question. There was a recommendation, public comment, that we construct a four-lane highway from Columbia into the Outer Banks. Can we do that, Mr.?
We can't build highways.
We can't build highways, okay. I'm just clarifying what our remit and abilities.
That brings us to item four. Unless you all have questions, unless anybody has any more questions.
Yeah, if anybody had any questions, County Manager, it's recap of where we started and how we got where we got today. Any questions to him?
Just wanna say thank you, Bobby. That was thorough.
Yeah, it's certainly more complicated than most of you folks realize, and hopefully, he clarified quite a bit of that. We go to item four now, and where do we go from here? Bobby, do you wanna make any comments with respect to that, or do I, I'm ready to open it up from the floor, from our commissioners?
No, sorry, Mr. Chairman, we're standing ready to follow your direction.
Okay. All right, at this time, I'll go to Commissioner's comments, and I'll ask Commissioner Bassnight if she's, if she will kick this off for us.
Mr. Chairman, may I reserve some time later if I think of anything else?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. We've got...
I have a few things I can say now, but, and being new to this board, I'm coming in, just like a lot of you, and finding out things and learning every single day of what's happened over the past four years since this board has been working on the housing issue. And in listening this morning, and in listening as a taxpayer or citizen before I joined the Board of Commissioners, I'm right there with you. It's, I know, I understand that, I think it's kind of a double-edged sword. I think we have, we want housing for our people who are our workforce on the beach. We don't, we don't wanna see our, I mean, we already see businesses closing because they don't have staff. We see our teachers, we have a waitlist for the teacher housing that we have at Runhill Ridge. I served on the school board for 12 years, and we had numerous teachers who took jobs here and had to say, I'm sorry at the last minute, I can't find a place to live, or if I can find a place, I can't afford to live. Our teachers start their, their starting salary is around $37,000. So, it's very difficult for a young teacher to live in Dare County. So, I understand, I mean, and I followed it as a school board member and as a taxpayer and a citizen, so. And now that I have had time to serve on this board with these gentlemen, I've seen firsthand the work they have put into this housing problem, this housing issue, every single day. I mean, we get multiple emails every day, and we answer them, I know our chairman answers every single one of them. And, you know, we live and breathe this issue, because every single one of us is committed to doing the right thing for the citizens of Dare County. They've tried a lot of things in these four years, and there have been roadblocks, as you've just heard Mr. Alton say. And it's, it's, it's a pathway that we need to really continue on and keep looking so that we can come up with some solutions. I really appreciate all of those who spoke this morning and who offered solutions. I heard some great solutions. I'm sorry to hear we can't give it to the schools, because that's where I would like to see it go for our teachers. Of course, a problem there would be with Dare Education Foundation. It's a four-year term, and then they, it was built, teacher housing was built for, as a recruitment tool, and after four years, I think the policy says, they look for somewhere else to live. somewhere else to live. So then you'd have them rolling back into looking for more housing. Right now, Chairman Wood, may I reserve comments for later?
Yes, ma'am.
When I think of more things?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much.
Absolutely. Commissioner Ross?
Yeah. Well, B, I've been around for a while, and I've had the pleasure of working on this, and I thought it was a pleasure. It was pretty enthusiastic when we began, Bobby, as I reminded you, in the fall of 2019. We made a trip to Raleigh because everywhere I was going during that summer, restaurant owners, restaurant workers, I would hear, gosh, we just can't find people, we, we desperately need a place to live. Consulted with my fellow commissioners, we talked about it and agreed, by golly, we need to take some action and do something. So we went to that housing conference, we met with Development Finance Initiative, a small group of professionals at UNC Chapel Hill dedicating themselves, which is why I interrupted you, County Manager, to point out this is what they do every day. They get up every morning and they go to work to find communities, developers, to build housing, to develop communities and units that people can live in that are clean, safe, affordable, and representative for what the needs are for that community. They did a study in July of 2020 after we had retained them and found that there were probably in excess of 1,000 one, two, and three-bedroom units necessary throughout the county, top to bottom, duct to aderis. 1,000, yeah. We had, as you pointed out, plans from this $35 million, which came much later, to construct 400, perhaps 400-plus units in addition to what we could do with the $12 million and the possibility of Woda Cooper. During that time, it was actually October of 2020 that we determined a piece of property on Roanoke Island off of Bowser Town Road that the county owned. The purchase and acquisition price would be zero. It was a developable piece of property that we had zoning and ordinance authority over and believed we could construct up to 64 units on this piece of property, and we could do it in record time. Please remember, October of 2020, this is now spring of '24. I'm, I'm glad Commissioner Stetson spoke, I'm sorry Commissioner, Mayor Wickstrom isn't here, because we spent a number of months in small group meetings, and I'm sure you remember those, Ruth, I was in those with you, and we discussed the many difficulties, traffic studies, hooking up to the sewer, would the sewer capacity handle it? If there was additional capacity, would the county pay for it? Yes. How about the hookup fees, would the county cover it? Yes. Were there other issues that needed to be addressed? Yes. And I remember very distinctly at the culmination, after again, many months of discussions, it was explained to me, Commissioner Ross, it's simply not the Manio way. And the citizens of Manio, through their representatives, spoke, it was not the Manio way. The 64 units were not going to go on Bowser Town Road. Okay? Not going to happen. Woda Cooper, they are based in Columbus, Ohio. As circumstance would have it, I have a daughter and grandchildren living in Columbus, and I have opportunity to go back there. Very early in the process, I met with Woda Cooper. I went to their offices. I spent the better part of three hours, this was, gosh, again, spring of 2020, I believe it was, before we even began this, right before the pandemic shutdown. And I vetted them very thoroughly, kind of on my own, Mr. Chairman. I, I put a lot of questions to them. I spent a long time in management positions with Procter &amp; Gamble, PepsiCo and others, so I, I felt I could at least ask and probe questions, and I found them to be a very quality group and very credible. We got to know their senior management, and just this past Christmas, a little over three months ago, I was in Columbus, and I had lunch with the president of Woda Cooper. And he basically said, Rob, we're, we're withdrawing. We, we aren't going to spend any more time or money. All of our developments, of which we have built thousands of units across the eastern part of the United States, we have worked diligently with communities where the local governments, the citizens, the associates that we're building for are seeking our, our partnership to build the units. He said, this is one of the rare instances where frankly, we, we don't want to fight with your communities. If they don't want us, we're going away. We will find other places to work and to build, and, I mean, we liked you guys, we thought Dare County was a great place, but we don't have any more resources or energy to devote to what we find is a very, very vigorous resistance to any attempts to build. County Manager Outen spoke about Nags Head. We were very excited about a piece of property in Nags Head. The chairman and I were at public comment and spoke to the board in Nags Head that day. As I recall, we had folks from the Board of Education, the Chamber of Commerce, local realtors, or maybe it was home builders, not realtors, I'm not quite sure. Number of us spoke. And I pointed out that I thought, guys, this is an historic moment for the town and the county to come together to construct frankly, about 45 to 50 units that would be very beautifully designed, safe, affordable for the, again, I hear teachers all the time, God bless them, and by the way, this board put a $1 million grant back in the fall to the Dare Education Foundation that is enabling, is somebody here from the Board of Education? Anybody? Yeah, Ron, how many units are they going to get in Kill Devil Hills on that property you guys own? An additional 12 units. Okay. Our board made that last leg of the stool possible. Am I wrong, Ron, or am I right? This is Ron Payne talking. I'm right. Yeah. To make sure that teacher housing went in on their property, the property owned by the Dare Education Foundation. So I explained that this was an historic opportunity for the county and the town to work together. And again, I guess I would give credit, the commissioners heard the residents of Nags Head, they came back with an immediate moratorium on zoning, and then wrote the ordinance to stop the project. That was Woda Cooper's first encounter, and Bowser Town was their second, and after many months of trying, that's why they withdrew. So I, I thought it was interesting, I heard some laughter during one of the public comments when the statement was made that the agreement had hopefully been written to build 400 units by 2023. There was quite a bit of chuckling and, and laughter in the audience, I'm glad everybody thought that was funny. I did not. I was deeply saddened by the fact that we didn't put a stick in the ground, not one. Four and a half years. I heard a deflection comment about Jockey's Ridge going into jeopardy and tearing down Nags Head Woods and so forth, none of which is really germane to the housing issue that we are confronted with today. And sadly, that I naively thought along with this board, that we would aggressively pursue with the help of the development finance team in Raleigh, other professionals consulting with a group like Woda Cooper that had built many, many units. As Bobby, County Manager, pointed out, the architects and construction arm of coastal affordable housing had constructed hundreds of units and done so successfully across the state, and instead, we, we've got nothing. Then I heard comments that this county is, you know, exploding in growth. Well, if you look at the census, we've been between 35 and 37,000 for the last decade, full-time residents. I heard the schools are overcrowded. Well, I kept on this board over seven years ago, and there were just about 5,000 students, and today, if there's anybody here, Ron, maybe you can help me, 5,130, give or take a couple? Okay. So we've exploded 100 students over the last seven years. So again, I'm, I'm pushing back on some of this because some of it is, is a hyperbole, guys. Let's try and stay with the reality of where we are and what we have. And we are trying desperately to address the need that was presented in this community. And if you look in the eyes of some of these folks, specifically two years ago, State of the County, a young teacher named Teresa Rossi was lamenting to me before she spoke at the State of the County, that she was in her third year of teacher housing and would have to leave the county because she could not afford or find a place to live. This is a young lady in her early twenties, seemed to be a delightful young woman, and I thought, Chairman Wood, by God, we've got to do something. This is a right and just cause. And again, we've heard everything this morning from some very well-founded questions to, honestly, some unfounded and often snarky criticism, to some very valid comments about we need to do more. But again, the overriding theme is we do, just make sure it's somewhere in Hyde County or over by the shooting range or the, the public dump in, on the mainland, which again, I know we have looked at, and I'm looking at the county manager for a moment, and that property was not suitable because it was a terrible place to build. Okay? So I've also heard the $35 million, send it back. I heard a lot of applause. I heard someone else, I think it may have been Malcolm, saying, don't send it back. I heard more applause. Oh, okay. We talked about the four-lane road, we should partner with Hyde and Currituck Counties. Does anyone understand how difficult it would be to commute from Hyde County to a job in, I don't know, Kitty Hawk? It would be really hard. So we're trying to stay within the realm of what is doable and what does a normal, well-meaning person want in a place to live? Do they want to commute 50 miles, or would they like to be at least in a reasonable Finally, I guess I'd just sum it up with, we have strived, we have striven for four and a half years. I personally, I don't know how many conference calls, Zoom calls with people in Raleigh, people in Columbus, people, coastal affordable housing, our attorneys, outside counsel, this board, evaluations, I've got a financial background, I can't tell you, and you guys can look to me and say yes or no. How many financial models I've personally conducted, how many models I've analyzed from Woda Cooper and/or coastal affordable housing, because I did this for a living for 35 years, all of which was endeavoring to find a way to make housing increase in size. That is, the capacity of clean, safe rental units that the people that are in that income range that County Manager cited, that man, the grocery store, the drugstore, the county offices, our schools, paramedics, EMS techs, deputies, assistant managers at Belk, the restaurant employees, that, well, I heard another suggestion, let's have the businesses just provide housing. It's a great idea, right? How do they do that and maintain a living? A lot of people in this community are small business owners, own a restaurant. Ask them next time you see them. Why don't you just build some housing for your employees? Guys, I mean, please, let's be real. We, we have tried very, very hard to do this. The legislature, again, as County Attorney pointed out, created this legislation, which was tied to a federal grant program. And as he eloquently said, the federal rules strings that tied the hands of both the state and the county had to be unwound. We spent months, Bobby, I don't know how many calls you were on that you and I had meetings with the chairman and others, how can we unravel this tangled federal bureaucracy so we can use the money? We finally gave it up. They had to go back to the legislature, cancel that, write new legislation that could bring the state money in, but it had its own qualifications, as you said, as a forgivable loan with certain tax implications and lower-than-market rents to make it justified and therefore support the housing that we wanted to do. This was an enormously complex and difficult process, all of which was going on, and everyone at this table was working on very, very diligently. Anyway, that brings us to today. Everyone's here, and I say with a little bit of humor, and metaphorically, you've come with torches and pitchforks, by God, we're going to take care of it today. Well, I hope some of this has been enlightening, that we weren't trying to burn down the town, guys. We weren't trying to destroy the communities. We live here too. We love this place. We love our, our, our neighborhoods, our natural resources, but we also feel enormous compassion for the people that work in our communities every single day, delivering the service at the hospital, at the grocery store, at the restaurant, at the drugstore, here in the county offices, in your local town offices, on the police force, in the sheriff's office. Guys, these are human beings, you know? We're trying to, to find a way, and we have not been successful. And again, I'm very saddened by that, wish to heck we had been, but we haven't been. That's all I've got, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Ross. Commissioner House.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was excited to look at the housing situation in Dare County and what we might be able to do to improve it. A lot of you in this room maybe not know this, but I was in emergency services for 35 years. A good number of those years were here in Dare County. When I first moved to Dare County, I lived in a one-room efficiency underneath the house until I was asked to move out because they sold the house. I lived in a hotel room for six months while working for Dare County EMS, because there was no housing available that I could afford. I tried to raise a family here in Dare County in a rundown trailer because that's all that was available that we could afford. I know what that plight is. We also have a situation where I was told by two different police chiefs, if I have to hire a police officer, as soon as I hire him, I have to take my police cap off and put on my real estate cap to see if I can find him a place to live. We've had that problem here with the county. We've, we've hired, gave offers to people to come, come work for the county, and they've declined because they could not find a place to live. We've had nurses at the hospital do the same thing, physical therapists at the hospital do the same thing. IV technicians, same situation. EMS is nationwide, is shorthanded, and we're shorthanded here in Dare County as well. But at least in other areas, they can find housing where Dare County, they cannot. Now let's put, or firefighter, he lived for six months in a two-car garage here in Dare County because could not find housing for four months. Now you might ask about emergency services. Well, they can live in Hyde, and they can live in Terrell County, or they can live on the northern end of, or western end of Currituck County. Your emergency services, even though when they're off duty, they're still on call, just like the five alarm fire we had over in Mann's Harbor. When it went to a fifth alarm, that means everybody comes in. I know four firefighters from other areas, other departments in, in the county. They came, they called in, they came. An hour and a half later, they were on station. Is that the emergency services you want in your county? It's a desperate need. I was excited to see this come through, but it doesn't look like it's going to happen. Our fishermen, they can't afford, due to regulations in fishing, it's cut their income drastically. There's not housing here for them. Our high school students graduating this year, or our COA students are graduating this year, very difficult to find housing. And I hate to say it, and I know we need it, but I'm wondering if the citizens of Dare County actually want it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner House, appreciate your comments. Commissioner Couch?
Send the money back. At least ask if the legislation can At least ask if the legislation can be rewritten. Uh, count the cost, cut our losses. It's not working. I'm done with the status quo.
Thank you, Commissioner.
There you go.
Commissioner, thank you.
Yes, sir. Let me tell you from a commissioner's point of view, inside the bubble looking out. As an employer and as of a small employer, um, I supply six rental units for employees and have for a while. And I, I, I let them stay at those units at a minimal charge. The most expensive unit is eleven hundred dollars a month. I do that because they're valued employees, they're good people, uh, they supply a service to me that I cannot get, um, and don't want to have to replace. I think it's my obligation as an employer to do whatever I can. Now I'm open seven days a week and not everybody is. So I think I'm doing a little bit right. The average person at Sugar Creek, the first opening day that they work there and they make fifteen thousand hours. I'm doing what I gotta do in order to enable my people to work and to run my business. I have to do that. I'd much rather pay the seven fifty-five an hour, but it ain't, it's not gonna work like that. I'd much rather buy those houses and rent them for twenty-two to twenty-eight hundred dollars a month, which what I could get if I so choose to and want to be a pain in the rural, rural rare and greedy, but I'm not. I got an obligation, like I said, to myself, to my employees, as well as the community, to be a good steward of my money and of my business. Year-round housing has always been a problem in Dare County, um, and it's not gonna go away. The multi-faceted solution that everybody's bringing up, I think that's, it's a great thing. We need to look at all aspects of it. Uh, Chairman Woodard formed a task force. That's a very valuable option to utilize that task force and do what we have to do and allow them to make decisions and then come back with recommendations, hopefully that we can solve this thing over a long period of time, cause it's gonna be a long period of time. Thirty-five million dollars, I would just tell you that I woke up one morning and I got a call from the governor's office, a friend of mine, and said, congratulations, Irvin, you guys got thirty-five million dollars on the budget. I didn't know anything about it. I called my buddy Bob Woodard, chairman, and I said, did you know about the thirty-five million dollars? He did not. Manager Outland did not know anything about it. Commissioner Oveman did not know anything about it. It was a gift from God. It just dropped out of nowhere and all of a sudden thirty-five million just landed in our lap. Well, I personally and everybody else on this board, we were excited as the dickens. We were high-fiving each other, we're going to these housing summits and, you know, we got thirty-five million dollars, we can make a difference in Dare County, we can make things happen here. And so we were just, we were calling friends, Danny was calling developers, I was calling them, let's make this thing work, let's all get together. It didn't work. Um, as Commissioner Ross said, you know, went to Nags Head, Nags Head said, they didn't wanna play the game. They didn't wanna let their property there be used for essential housing and they were turned down. Manny who turned down twice, I know, Kill Devil Hills, Coastal went to Kill Devil Hills and said, hey, listen, we wanna put two-hundred-and-fifty houses, but they turned them down there. Dare County is telling these companies, we do not want you here in Dare County. We do not want essential housing to pay your people and to have a, for them to raise families. Even at fifteen dollars an hour, nobody at Sugar Creek's gonna be a buy house. Come on, y'all. It is, ain't gonna work. That guy was talking for twenty dollars an hour, he can't buy a house, he can't hardly rent a house, he can't afford it because of our land value down here. So defeat. We got defeated in all these things, but we're still willing to play the game. We're there negotiating, trying to talk to each other, trying to make this thing work. And then all of a sudden, once again, out of the sky falls Bill two fifty-nine that says that any municipality in Dare County cannot deny someone to build essential housing in their community. All that did was make us look like a bunch of frickin' crooks, like we were corrupt, which is the furthest thing from the point. We are here because we care about Dare County. I put myself in line when I ran for election. I, I get phone calls, I get people calling me up and talking not very nicely to me. I have integrity, folks. I do, I like my job. I love the people of Dare County, just like everybody on this board. Everybody is here because we want to make a difference in the community. And this housing thing is just tough. It is tough, tough, tough. It's the toughest thing I've ever had to deal with and I don't know the answers. I'm like Commissioner Couch, I'm, I'm done, I'm done with the status quo as we're going right now. I want to proceed forward and have things happen in a positive way. I mean, we gotta be positive about it. You know, Malcolm Farron got up and spoke very eloquently about, you know, they suggested Bowser Town, you can't, it's not gonna happen there. Manny is not gonna let it happen. You know, we talking about over in, um, Stumpy Point area. It doesn't pay to go over into Stumpy Point area. I don't know what we're gonna do. I'm willing to fight and do what we gotta do, but I think the status quo as we go is not where we need to go on this thing here. We're allowing the task force. Um, I think it's time to cut our losses and go forward. And that's about all I got. I appreciate you, I appreciate you guys coming out here. You know, you, you pour your heart and soul into what you said. I take it, um, as it came out as being that you care about your community, but please understand that we care about the community too and we're trying to make a difference and it's difficult being up here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first of all, I want to, uh, thank all of the speakers who spoke at public comment today. Uh, I think you were sincere in your presentations and you, you were, uh, you, you said what you thought and what you believed to be the case. I want to assure everyone in this county that this board began this process with the best intentions with regard to providing housing, needed housing, essential housing for people in Dare County. As was stated a couple of times, this problem has been here for twenty and I think somebody said even thirty years. That's a long time, folks. That's a long time. But as Chairman pointed out in his opening remarks, this board has tried to be, attempted to be, and has been mostly successful in being proactive and addressing the various issues that have come to our knowledge that this county needs. We have been very proactive in that regard and wanted to be proactive with regarding to housing. As was stated, we started at the school of government. That was, that was, that was where you need to go to find out how to do these things. As was mentioned, they're dedicated to doing this day in, day out. We did it the way they said to do it. We used proper procedures and proper process that was, that was defined by that body so that we didn't stumble, step on ourselves, uh, that we would do it the right way. As was mentioned, we tried two developers, Woda Cooper and Coastal Affordable Housing. Woda tried in Nags Head and it was rezoned. That was basically because of public outcry. Um, the other project that they were trying to do there, they found that they got no cooperation and that was basically due to public pressure on the Board of Commissioners in Nags Head. It's understandable. It was mentioned, uh, by Commissioner Stetson, with regard to the, to the Bowser Town, uh, project that Woda wanted to do, uh, here on Rock Island. And she said, we listened to our citizens. And that's where we find ourselves in every aspect, every project that has been attempted to be done in this county, it has been turned down, turned away, not accepted because the people, the leadership in those, in those municipalities have listened to their citizens. Woda left, as was mentioned, they're doing, they have done a project and are doing a second project in Rocky Mount, one of the places where they have been welcomed in, realizing that they need housing and they are doing projects there. Um, look them up, they're pretty nice-looking projects. That's what we would have, could have had here. The same thing is true in the projects that Coastal has looked at. They tried a project in, um, Kill Devil Hills and that did not receive public support, received public outcry that it was, it was not wanted and, uh, their board stepped away from it. Bobby reviewed all of this and pointed out that a number of the parts of this process have been either misunderstood or misrepresented. And as was stated earlier, I hope that the, the, um, presentation that he gave today helps alleviate, uh, some of the misunderstandings and, uh, misinterpretations that people have had about the, the, the steps going through, uh, affordable housing, public-private partnerships and the way these things have to be done. Commissioner Ross did a great job on the timeline. Thank you. But I want to tell you that this is a complicated issue and the reason I prefaced this comment, it's a complicated issue due to gaining public acceptance of essential housing in any area that we have looked at so far. Now this is a problem that goes back thirty years. And I can tell you, unless something's done, unless the housing, uh, uh, task force can come up with ideas, parlaying some of the ideas that were possibly mentioned here today, it's gonna be here thirty years from now. And it's gonna be here thirty years after that, cause they don't just go away by themselves. It takes effort, it takes, it takes hard decisions to be made, it takes people getting, uh, uh, away from this, uh, I, I'll say NIMBY attitude, I, I kinda hate to, to, to say it that way, but that's in essence is what it is. Uh, but that's what it's gonna take to ultimately solve this problem, folks. We ain't gonna come outside one day and the sun come up and all of a sudden we don't have a housing problem in Dare County. That's all I have.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. A lot's been said today and, uh, once again, I wanna thank everyone for their public comment and we, we value it tremendously. We value those that have emailed us and we'll make that part of the public record. It's, it's like the vice chairman said, we began this quest, um, with the best interest of our citizens in Dare County and those in need. We, um, we chose Woda Cooper for that twelve million that the county manager spoke about of our funds, um, because they had multiple experiences in what's called LITC development. Uh, developers get in some cases four percent, others in other projects, some cases nine percent tax credits to be able to build these things and, and they've done it and, and they've done a remarkable job of it and their, their renderings of their facilities are second to none. I know there's been a lot of angst about, um, coastal affordable housing. And in one particular individual, Mr. Hennessy, I stated this at the last meeting and I'll repeat it today. Mr. Hennessy is one of five principals. I've had the privilege and the honor of sitting in the room with Mr. Robbie Ferris, Mr. Rick Green, Eric Littstrom, Avon Thomas. These architects, it's a part of this LLC and this developer and builder. I'll put against the integrity of any developer or architect in the entire state of North Carolina. These are principled gentlemen and it's a shame that, um, everything's been thrown out with respects to Mr. Hennessy and in fact, the statement was made, we gave him five million dollars. I mean, come on, folks. We haven't given Mr. Hennessy five million dollars. It's far, farther us from the truth. It's been said, let's go back to the legislators to ask for them to help solve this. Can we have them, you know, change the language, uh, give the money to a nonprofit? They're not, they're not gonna, they're not gonna give the money to a nonprofit. They're not gonna change the language? That's not the problem. We change the language, we do all of that, we go back and we rebid this and we try to get another developer? Folks, they're gonna, they're gonna be, they're gonna be confronted with exactly what Woda Cooper and Coastal Affordable Housing have been confronted with. And I'm not shy to say it, and that's the NIMBY, not in my backyard. I'd like to see how you react when a young lady walks up to you with tears in her eyes, makes thirty-eight thousand dollars a year, got a master's degree and teaches our students in high school and looks at you and says, I can't find housing. Now we can tell that young lady, you can teach our children all day long, but I don't want you living in my neighborhood. I don't want you as my next door neighbor. We can tell the firemen, the Commissioner House spoke about, that's living in a garage. You know what? You can put out my fire at two o'clock in the morning when you get a three alarm fire, but don't you think about living in my neighborhood or living next door to me. Or you can tell that paramedic, when you call nine-one-one and you're on your deathbed and he comes and revives you, you can tell him thank you, but don't you dare move in my neighborhood or don't you dare move next door to me. Folks, the list goes on and on. It's a shame, I find it totally a shame that we can't live in harmony with our fellow We talk about tax incentives for Airbnbs and et cetera and you gotta go through all kind of li- uh, legislature and I don't even know if it's legal or not and county managers looked into that. Uh, uh, you know, uh, we didn't support two fifty-nine, HB two fifty-nine. For six months, six months, I have, I, I meet with the mayors every single month for lunch, for six months. Well, we talked about that and I told them, there's no way that Dare County Board of Commissioners will support such le- legislation to take away the solvency of our municipalities. For the same length of time, the county manager met with town managers and told them the same identical thing. We passed a resolution opposing HB two fifty-nine. I'm not so much sure what else you would like for us to do with respects to saying that we will not take away the solvency of a municipality. We made it very clear that we will not do that. Folks, this isn't about coastal affordable housing. This isn't about Woda Cooper. Unfortunately, this is not the time and place for Dare County to approve essential or Unfortunately, this is not the time in place for Dare County to approve essential or workforce housing. It's already been said, the number of place, times that we've been turned down, the number of opportunities that are out there. It is clearly a NIMBY situation, and I don't know how we overcome it. So I don't know how the board feels, but I will not move any further with Coastal Affordable Housing, Woda Cooper, and I will vote, if it comes to that, to send the money back to the state. And I will also keep the Dare County task force in place and let them attempt to tackle this housing situation in Dare County. I'm optimistic and I'm hopeful, but I will keep that task force in place that has representatives from the municipalities, all the stakeholders throughout Dare County, and individuals to serve on that, to see if they can come up with some solutions. I will, I will ask Ms. Bassnight if she, she yield to come back to, if she has anything else to say.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Woodard. I want to say that I'm extremely proud to serve with these gentlemen who have done so much for the citizens of Dare County. As you've heard, they spoke very eloquently this morning of all the things that have been done along with, with our county chairman, manager, Bobby Outen, of the things that they really have tried to do to help the people of Dare County. Find places, I mean, I'm kind of partial to teachers, but for all those other people they've talked about, the EMS people, the firefighters, all those people who need housing. And it, it's heartbreaking to me that, as Chairman Woodard said, I, I don't think our county residents really want that at this point. We cannot find a place for, that anybody wants it in their communities. I, as a new person on the board, I hate that you really get into this, but I do think that it's time to cut our losses. I agree with Chairman Woodard that we should terminate our contract with Coastal Affordable Housing, and if necessary, return the $35 million to the state.
Anyone else have anything else they'd like to say?
Commissioner House?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Dare County is unique, as 88% of the county is owned by state or federal governments. This project, we started out as a great idea in response to a tremendous problem and an outcry from our community. This is evidenced by the following headlines over the past three years. Outer Banks Prepares for Summer. Where Are the Workers? Spectrum News. Supply and Demand Amid Worker Shortage. Outer Banks Businesses Prepare for Summer. WNC. Workers Can't Afford to Live on the Outer Banks in Dare County. Wants to Help. The Virginia Pilot. Dare Board Turns Back to UNC on Essential Housing. Outer Banks Voice. Outer Banks Businesses Struggle to Find Workers in Shortage. Raleigh News &amp; Observer. With Worker Shortage, Dare DPW Shifts Services. Outer Banks Voice. Making a Dent in the OBX Housing Crisis. Outer Banks Voice. OBX Businesses Prepare for Shorthanded Summer. Outer Banks Voice. Worker Shortages. Fear of Coronavirus and Industry Dislocation Stimps Job Recovery. National News, U.S. News. Business Owners Struggle to Find Workers During Reopening. CNBC. Dare Board Okays New Measures for Essential Housing. Island Free Press. Time to Get Serious About Affordable Housing. Coast Times. Dare Board Moves Ahead on Affordable Housing Insights. Outer Banks Voice. It's a Disaster. Outer Banks Voice. Dare to Survey Local Merchants on Worker Housing Needs. Outer Banks Voice. Beach Town Businesses Welcome Visitors As They Struggle to Find Employees. WTOP. Housing Crisis Sparks Concern at Dare Board Meeting. Free Island Press. Now, we need to address where we are today. I make the motion today, through no fault of Coastal Affordable Housing, who has done diligent work and executed the work according to the agreement. As we sit here today, everyone understands there is a need for essential housing. However, they do not want it in their backyards, and there aren't any backyards left. Therefore, Mr. Chairman, at this time, I make a motion that we halt this project and give the county manager the authority to make the appropriations steps to unwind it.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by Commissioner Bassnight. The floor is open for additional comments with respects to the motion.
By unwinding the project, we are saying the money will be returned to the General Assembly. Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
That's the only way it can go.
Okay. I'm just clarifying that for everyone in the audience. Mr. County Manager?
Unwinding would mean I would go to the Office of Management and Budget and get instructions on what to do with it since we're, if this motion passes, we're out.
Fair enough.
That's right.
Fair enough.
Anyone else have any comments?
Could I have a clarification? The motion includes, as you said, we, unwinding would be canceling the contract with Coastal Affordable Housing. And is there a way, any negotiation with the $35 million with the state? Or does it all go hand in hand?
So if I'm taking the motion to, stopping our efforts on affordable housing going forward, and I'm to go to OMB and find out what to do with the money?
And how to return it.
And, and they'll give me guidance on whatever that is. And then if you all elect to try to get new legislation to do whatever, then nothing stops you from doing that. That's.
Yeah, but that wasn't in the motion.
That's not in the motion.
That's not in the motion.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing that, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. I need a motion to adjourn until May the 7th, 2024.
Motion, motion adjourned.
Commissioner Ross, seconded by Commissioner Couch. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries.